All rise please. Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Is there any visitor or public comment? Mr. Peters?
Hi, Keith Peters, Steeplechase Drive. I'd like to ask the Board of Supervisors to reject the plans that were presented last meeting for Plan A and Plan B for redevelopment of the township municipal complex because I don't understand why there's this continued decimation of the park with the band shell and the building that's being suggested and the loss of the tennis courts and the basketball courts. If the Plan A is adopted, it would be the second bathroom in the area, the third bathroom in the park when we really need one down by Kids Castle and near the Environmental Education Grove. There's also, I think the Board of Supervisors failed to recognize that it's not an essential governmental function to have an indoor basketball court or meeting room when there's university, YMCA, athletic schools and other opportunities in the area. The building that they're suggesting could be put here and keep this footprint on a second floor. And I think that if this is the police department proposing for compelling this change, we should do it with the tail not wagging the dog. We should have a separate police building built and rehab this building. Thank you.
Thanks, Keith. Any other public comment?
All right, welcome, everyone. The next meeting of this Board of Supervisors is Tuesday, August 18th at 7:00 p.m. The Ways and Means Committee will hold this meeting this month on Thursday tomorrow at 7:00 p.m. here. The Sounds of Summer Concert Series is ongoing. The admission is free. The next concert is the Big Band from the Valley on July—Big Band—let's see if I do that again. Big Band from the Valley on July 22nd, and that will be at Chapman Park at 7:00 o'clock. The Quakertown Band, July 29th, at Central Park at 7:00 p.m. Mango Man, August 5th, at Chapman Park at 7:00 p.m. And Grease Sing Along with the Movie, August 12th, at Central Park, and that will be at 8:00 p.m. Leaf and Yard Waste Recycling for the Doylestown Township residents only. Drop-off site is open every third Saturday of the month from March through December from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00, and the drop-off location is on the New Britton Road access to Central Park. And reminder, you can purchase discount movie tickets and discount theme tickets through our administrative offices. And the last announcement is that Drugs in Our Community Reality Check is being presented by Representative Marguerite Quinn on July 29th, 4 to 7, at the intermediate unit at 705 Shady Retreat Road. Next item on the agenda is a minute's approval for the June 16th, 2015 meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
I have one correction to the minutes. I don't know if there are any others. Under Honor Flights Bucks County section, Section 4 of Correspondence, my motion was to the supervisors that we approved $100 payment to the Honor Flights Bucks County. That was the motion, not that each supervisor pay $100.
Right.
So I stand—I ask that be corrected. And the motion failed—it was—I forget what the—was it 4 to 1? The motion failed 4 to 1.
Thank you.
So with that correction?
3 to 1.
3 to 1?
3 to 1.
Thank you. Any other corrections or revisions to the minutes? All right, with a motion and a second and that correction, all in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
One extension.
Thank you. Bike and hike path correspondences. Duff, you want to carry this one?
Yes, we received a letter from Dan and Ellen Loftus recommending that we consider installing a bike and hike trail along Shady Retreat from the area of Old Colonial Green up to and joining the backside of the hospital where the trail connects to Doyle Elementary School. This was reviewed at the bike hike meeting this morning. Supervisor Toohill was there, and the bike hike committee suggested that we have a little sketch drawn up and that we look at possibly looking for funding through a Safe Roots to School grant.
Okay. Thank you. What else you got?
The other correspondence is on the papal visit.
Papal, that would be.
That would be. Sorry, let me start again. On the papal visit, and the county has advised us as to the work that they're doing through the Emergency Management Coordinator's Office on providing services while the impact of the pooping in Philadelphia will have on Bucks County. There are only going to be three, four locations for the Septilines, the Cornwall Heights, Croydon Woodburn, Levittown, and Warminster, like Doylestown Station won't even be available. We probably will see an increase in traffic, perhaps on 611, some of our other roadways. They are asking and have been working with like our Fire Marshal's Office, Emergency Management, our Police Department and things, so we're, I think, involved in that and everything. So—and then the last piece of correspondence. Board will recall that we had asked and gone with all the other municipalities in the area along the new 202 Parkway to have the old quote Route 202 become the Business, U.S. Business Route 202, and that has been approved by PennDOT.
Good. Okay, and now we have—
Excuse me, just have a question for Stephanie. I didn't get it out fast enough. For the bike and hike path request, do we know, has there been any known issues along there that might prompt us to move faster or just take retard—I mean, has there been any reported issues?
I understand the concern came because particularly that the Colonial Green development and the others off of Shady Retreat, that if you look, there's no protection or anything for children coming to Doyle over that, particularly over the bypass. So I don't think they cited any particular accidents or incidents, but that intersection is kind of set off. It's not doesn't align as well as—and then once you get on that property, it's great that bridge by Doyle, but—
Okay. Thank you.
Great follow-up. Public Water and Sewer Authority, we got a resignation from Mr. Plummer, and we'll— and he recommends that we appoint someone with some young people, so in their families, and we'll endeavor to do that. Is there a motion to accept Mr. Plummer's resignation?
I'm going to make a motion to accept Mr. Plummer's resignation from the fellow quarter of Sewer Authority. Second, then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Send them. Thank you. We're sorry to interrupt. Okay, reports from the solicitor.
Nothing we won't discuss later in the agenda, Madam Chairperson.
You can it?
Nothing to report.
Mario?
Just one thing this evening. As the board may recall, over the last couple of years FEMA was in the process of revising all the Bucks County flood maps. We had to, you know, review the maps. We had to notify all the affected property owners within the flood plains. We had to revise our flood plain ordinance. Those maps became effective on March 16th of this year. On March 24th, the township received a letter basically saying that FEMA is studying some more watersheds within Bucks County, and they're going to be revising the maps again. Last week, staff reviewed the maps that FEMA provided. This go-around, it's just the Cooks Run watershed. Again, we have to review the maps. We have to reach out to all the affected property owners along the Cooks Run, and they're saying we need to revise our flood plain ordinance again, but I'm pretty sure that our flood plain ordinance is compliant as previously submitted. We reviewed the maps last week, and there are significant changes to the flood plain along the Cooks Run. This will affect a lot of properties, some in a big way. So we would—I know that the township is going to be sending out letters to the affected property owners, and we would recommend that these property owners do review the maps. The county has a website. It's not quite up to speed right now, but when they—when they get it up and running, it should—it should help everybody out. So I just wanted to, you know, let the board know that we're going to be going through the process one more time.
Thank you. I don't know. Maybe not thank you, but—
For residents to review that on the website, I remember last time we did this, we looked at one website and it didn't show a whole lot, and then they had a second one that they were building. So aren't they even to the second one yet?
Yes.
Yeah.
Right now, the county website shows the current maps, the March 16th maps. So they've brought that up to date.
Okay.
It's the—what they're calling preliminary maps again that have not quite—
Moved them over yet.
Yeah. They thought they had them, but as of last Friday, we couldn't find them.
Yeah, because that older system, it didn't show you much.
Yeah, that was the FEMA system, and it wasn't as easy to read yet.
Do you have anything, Madam Manager?
Yes, I do. I just have one thing. It was a recommendation with the board that we host some open houses on our proposed building renovations, and I'm proposing we do that Thursday, August 27th from 10:00 a.m. to noon, and also on Thursday, September 10th from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00. This will allow our residents who may be seniors or stay-at-home moms to come during the day, and in the evening hours for people who are working during the day.
Okay.
So we'll be—staff will be putting that together.
Okay. And all these announcements and the kind of information is available on our website. So if you miss it tonight, and everybody out there, you can always check everything—all this information on our site. All right, supervisors. Sean, you anything?
Yeah, I'll try to be brief. I have three quick reports, but in the interest of time, we'll move through here. Just briefly, the Park and Rec Committee would like to thank everyone who's coming out to the concert series, and thank everybody for coming out for our fireworks, which were a big success, and all the help from the township staff as well as Borough help as well and staff that participated. The Bike and Hike Committee this morning met, as you mentioned, we talked about the request for the extension of the trail, had continued discussion about what's been referred to as a Buella Road Trail, and of course, the Lower State Road Trail, ongoing discussions with the river crossing and so on. More to come over the next year and so on. We do have our annual Trail Awareness Day, September 20th. There's—you can see online for some things from last year. This does not conflict with the papal visit. It's the weekend before. A lot of people ask that. In addition, working with the Heritage Conservancy, they are—Ashley Thompson from the Conservancy, they're hosting their second, what they're calling Tuesday at the Trail. And we'll announce it because they're going to host it here after our next Bike and Hike meeting. Our meeting's at 8:00 a.m. on the third Tuesday, so in August, following our meeting, they're going to have a trail or hike through Harts Woods. So it's an old wood, old growth forest, and they're going to familiarize people with that. And they'll probably start here and then go up through the park system and through Harts Woods. Lastly, we met—the Agricultural Security Area Committee met. And I say that, and you know, I've jokingly said before, big names for never having any meetings, you know, that we've since I've been here. But it was formed back in 1991. I can't vouch for whether there's been any meetings since then, but likely after our agenda this time, there probably won't be another meeting for 10 years. But we had—it was all of—we had a few members, original members, as well as representative from Warrington Township from their security board, which is pretty much the fact they don't even meet anymore. But basically, we did some housekeeping. I have a map of our agricultural security zone, if anybody's interested after the meeting to take a look at. We're going to just do some additional housekeeping, review the points, and make sure that we still maintain the requirements for that zone, which is 500 acres. Now, aren't too many properties in it, but the fact that Dalvall College is part of that area, that makes up a big portion of our biggest landholder. But the decision was to do an inventory of what we have and verify that. We only had one property that would be needed to be removed off Hap Drive, which is now residential development—or been developed residentially, rather. And I think the decision was made to put something out in the next newsletter, maybe just a review of that meeting, and perhaps make clear that if you wanted to add your property, although nobody's beating down the door at the moment, to the zone, they could, and we'd explain the requirements and such for doing so. I think that's it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay.
Two items. One, this—we talked about doing this for the Environmental Advisory Committee. On June 20th, they did do—get all their plantings in.
Planting.
The planting's up at the environmental center, there at the bird blind. And what—in addition, they're just doing the plantings, they also put the markers, and obviously, this is for native plants. So it's one, just—it'll look good, but two, to educate people on what are the types of things that will grow in shade areas and sun areas of your own homes that are strictly native plants. So they're all marked, so please take a look if you get a chance. The second item was on roads and bridges and stuff, and I just wanted to make sure people were aware of it. If you go to the township website and go under Departments and look under Roads, under their—what they post is, are those roads and bridges and guide rail and tree trimming in the month that they're going to be done. It identifies the roads, identifies when they're going to start, and as the timeline gets closer, then obviously Stephanie also sends out a notice on Google Group and on the website and on the Facebook. So it's all listed there, all the work that Dick plans to get done this year.
Great. Thanks.
I had three committee meetings. The first one was the Planning Commission, and we've talked about—or I've talked about in the last few meetings, the redrafting of the sign ordinance. We received notification, the U.S. Supreme Court made a decision in June, which just totally changes the entire structure that we had. So we are back to square one. First square is trying to understand what they're telling us, and then two, to start from draft and start to build up sign ordinance that will agree with Supreme Court. Second committee was the Sewer Authority, and it's been a couple of months that the letters have gone out to 20 residents, and we've had three responses in the positive. We've had six or so in discussion, and the rest, nothing. And I mean, our obligation is for all of the residents in that area. I mean, they're putting through a great deal of discomfort, not to mention the streets, but waiting for this whole project to go, and we're being held up, in my mind, by a few peoples. And I guess it's more of a question. Jeff, if you need something tonight, like a motion to start condemnation, I'm willing to propose that. You've got X amount, you probably know some that are close and some that aren't even close, and leave that in your discretion to which ones, if any, you want to start.
In conversations with the township manager, we felt that we would try to see how many people could be moved along by the Sewer Study Committee. They would follow up with another letter, and if we do not have a serious response by this August meeting, we would present a resolution of condemnation in August. For those that haven't signed on to the program yet.
So that's—it's going to be another month before we—
Well, because condemnation is a very significant activity. We want to give people an opportunity to be asked to do it without having to go through that process. So in the— in the letter that's going to go out, we're going to tell them that— You're going to tell them that? Yes.
Okay.
I'll defer to Jeff. If you get a letter in the mail that says, "Really, really, please, we'd like you to sign the easement," or if you get a letter in the mail that says, "We are starting condemnation procedures," I think you'll get a different response.
Well, the letter will be pleasant, but it'll provide them with a notification that if we don't hear from them within a certain timeframe, that's the next step.
So what date are you going to give them for—
When's our meeting in August?
August 15.
Sometime the end of the week before. But we'll have the resolution ready.
Do you need something from us now?
No.
No. Anything else?
Yes.
What?
The DTMA met, and several opportunities came up, and I'll defer to Dick, who can speak much better about the things that are happening, but it's very exciting, and the water authority is really making some big inroads in some areas. So I'll turn it over to Dick for the next couple of minutes, if I may.
Update board and the public. The Municipal Authority has begun—the early beginnings of looking at three different projects in the township and in a neighboring township, or borough, actually. And basically, they're looking at the furlong area to try to resolve some of the contaminated groundwater wells that are over there by putting in public water. That is a—an area generally bound by Edison Furlong Road, York Road, Swamp Road, and Turkey Lane Valley Road. It would require a distribution system, a well, wellhouse, and a storage tank. Possible players in that would be DEP, DTMA, and perhaps the Pavilion property. Estimated cost is upwards of $2.4 million. Second project is in New Britton Borough. The boroughs ask us to look at certain areas of the borough that they feel are in need of public water, i.e. the 202 corridor, generally speaking, out to Almsouth Road and up to Sandy Ridge Road and approximately to New Britton Road. They think they are going to have some substantial buildings coming online in the borough, which would need public water for not only drinking and bathing purposes, but for also fire suppression. So we're going to take a look at that, take a look at a couple of other areas they mentioned to us that have groundwater contamination, and we're looking at several different projects. I suspect that the beginning cost may be in the realm of about $900 to $1 million. Third project they're looking at is in the Pebble Ridge Wood Ridge Development. It involves basically an extension of our distribution system in that area, which could provide water services and fire hydrants. Possible players, obviously, are just DTMA and the township residents. We're looking at maybe a cost of $2.3 million. So these are all in our infancy, and we're going to see what we can do to resolve some of the water problems in the township.
Thanks, Tim. Anything else, sir?
No.
Thank you. And you, Mike?
No.
My last night, Stephanie Mason, myself, Keith Peters, and back there at Ebenbach, met at the Doylestown Historical Society. They had a special contingency from China. There were a producer, executive producer, and a director of a six-part series they're doing in the national television in China on the Great Wall of China. Why they were in Doylestown is because one of the great explorers that explored and walked the whole wall of China is a gentleman from Doylestown Township, Edward Guile. Now, he's significant in China. Most people in Doylestown or in this country don't know who he is, but significant enough that he's part of their six-part mini-series. So they were here last night. We had an opportunity to meet them. It was very exciting, and it's very exciting to hear that Doylestown—Doylestown Borough, of course, everybody's Doylestown. We want to correct them. No, it's from Doylestown Township. But anyway, Doylestown will be in this—as part of this great six-part series that they will be broadcasting in China, and then hopefully in English and made for worldwide distribution. It was—sounds very, very fascinating. Tomorrow, we're all tripping to Core Creek Park to the—to the Commissioners Meeting, Bucks County Commissioners Meeting. We are getting the Conservation of the Year Award for Environmental Advisory Council, so thank you very much to our EAC group. We also had our great township golf outing on June 1st, and the proceeds of this year's event is going to the Kids Castle. And pleased to say that we raised—I'm rounding it off—$20,000 to go to Kids Castle from the golf outing, so thank you, everyone who participated in that. Now, we're going to move on to the agenda. That's all I have. So what we're going to do, I'm going to take—I'm going to jump the agenda a little bit. Next is the public hearing on an amendment to the zoning. I just want to take anybody who's here, and I know that Mr. Timmons is here. Is there anyone here not for the public hearing on the zoning change in Ferry Road and 313, except for—we're going to take that—we're going to take that milestone Covenant Bank business out of—out of order. Okay? It's fine. Now, the board was presented last meeting— June 2nd? June 2nd? I'm sorry. Two meetings ago. With an opportunity Covenant Bank proposed to naming the band shell for a five-year stint, $10,000, you get for $50,000. It was a new relationship proposal with Covenant Bank, and the board asked that the township that we proceed—we—we look to our long-term supporters to see if they would have an interest in doing that or taking part in that. And just today, we received a response from the Thompson Organization, and Stephanie will let you take it. And Mr. Timmons, I think you're aware of this.
Yes. We received a phone call followed by an email from Alicia Hughes on behalf of the Thompson Organization. Thompson Organization is entrusted in the naming rights of the band shell as well in Central Park for $50,000 for a three-year term payment spread over the term. They apologize for the delay, but their key people had been out of town and traveling, but they feel thankful for all the township has done for the community, and they feel they want to give back to the community and have made this very generous offer. And so now the board has two offers on the table for the band shell and naming it at this time.
Thoughts, thoughts, thoughts? I don't want to cut this conversation.
Only comment from—reflected from the Park and Rec Board or Committee was that they did favor a shorter term, which could be done by anybody, I guess, but rather than five years, would prefer the three-year commitment, since this is new, basically trial, you know, if you will, other than that.
Right. And I want to—I want to point out Covenant Bank is new bank to this—to this community. They're Millstone Bank—Milestone Bank, so sorry. Now Covenant Bank, big supporters of the performing arts, and so that's why they wanted to do this. What I'm going to ask is, you know, regardless of what happens tonight, is that Covenant Bank support the performing arts in this community. We will have series and concert series, so I'm hoping that—it's hard for us to turn down $50,000 in a three-year period. I'm not going to get into bidding war, and we're not going to ask you to do that, and as opposed to five years of $50,000. So I think you know where it's going here. Also, Thompson Organization has, as long as I've been involved in the township for over 25 years, and volunteer in Oktoberfest and everything else, they've all been a huge supporter of us. So with that, I would—I would move that we accept the Thompson offer and name the band shell.
Can we not accept both?
We cannot accept both. I have that motion on the table, however. Is there a second?
Which motion?
A motion for Thompson.
She made a motion to accept the offer from Thompson Organization for a three-year period to sponsor the band shell at $50,000. Am I right?
That's right.
I mean, just—I know, again, we don't want to get into a bidding war, but did we ask Covenant Bank if they would do $50,000 at three—three years?
We don't want to go into bidding.
It was mentioned to them.
Okay.
And at the time, they had said, "No, I don't know if that—" [inaudible 00:00:52]
Paul? Is there a second to the motion? I'm going to withdraw the motion and ask that—I'm going to move that we table it for tonight, and then we can—we'll just—we'll give it some time.
Yeah. Thanks.
Fair enough? Okay. All right, so the motion's been tabled, and we're going to move on to the—anybody else here not for the public hearing? All right, we're going to move on to the public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Timmons. Thanks for coming.
If I may, by way of background, Buckingham Retail Properties LLC filed an application with the township requesting that the Board of Supervisors amend the provisions of the Doylestown Township zoning ordinance so as to add additional uses to the C4 zoning district. Uses would include a use E1 retail store and use E20 motor vehicle fueling center, as used as it would be permitted by conditional use. That means by subsequent approval of the Board of Supervisors, subject to certain criteria. In addition, the applicant requested that a new section be added, 175-177.5, which would establish the criteria related to the conditional uses of UC1 retail store and use E20 motor vehicle fueling center. Notice of this hearing was advertised in the Intelligencer, and a copy of the ordinance was made available to the Law Library and to the Intelligencer. In addition, a copy of the proposed ordinance was sent to the Bucks County Planning Commission and to the Doylestown Township Planning Commission for comment. In addition, the site was posted with a copy of the notice indicating that a hearing would occur tonight. Accordingly, the requirements of the municipality's planning codes relates to the consideration of this public hearing have been met. The record should reflect that the Board of Supervisors has received reports from the township's professional staff. They've also received the minutes and recommendations from the Doylestown Township and Bucks County Planning Commission. In addition, they have received copies of the PowerPoint presentations presented by residents, the applicant, and Bowler Engineering. And inasmuch as Buckingham Retail Properties has made the request for the modifications to the zoning ordinance, the evening's proceedings will begin with a presentation from Mr. Van Louveney. Louveney.
Thank you, Mr. Garten. It will not be entirely by Mr. Van Louveney.
Well, I assume you were orchestrated.
And I think you'll probably get tired of hearing me, from me if I were to make all of the entire presentation. Also, just from a procedural standpoint to Mr. Garten, once we make our presentation, would I be correct in assuming that you'll be offering the, anyone in the audience, the opportunity for public comment?
Obviously, it's a public hearing, so public comment is very much appropriate.
That's what I assumed, all right. Because we have, and it may affect my presentation, we have, we started this process with, back in October of 2014. We generated a list of all of the neighbors before we filed anything with this township and had a first meeting. We rented this room and had a meeting with a number of interested residents in October, on October 9th. At that meeting, we listened to concerns, including comments like, "We are not interested, you should just go away," which we expect to hear at a meeting like that. We all...
I know that way about you.
Thank you. I'll take that as a compliment after all these years. As a result, at that meeting, there had been a request by some of the residents to hear from representatives of Wawa because we had made it clear that one of the primary uses that was being proposed here was a Wawa with gas, we called a motor vehicle fueling center. And that was the catalyst for the suggestion that we were going to propose to add a use to the ordinance. We had a second meeting then on December 3rd of 2014 with the residents, again, in the same room. On January 22nd, we filed our initial pre-petition to amend the zoning ordinance. Jeff has accurately characterized the amendment. It is not, and I want to emphasize this, this is not a request to rezone any particular properties. It is a simple request to add two uses to the list of uses permitted in your C4 districts, of which there are several, not just one. And those uses are, were initially the, a large retail store, UC2, and the new use that we've called E2 Motor Vehicle Fueling Center. And again, as Jeff indicated, we had carefully attempted to tailor the conditions to address concerns that we had heard expressed by neighbors and which we anticipated might be expressed by the Planning Commission and ultimately by this board. When I say this is not a new zoning district, Jeff indicated that the properties have been posted. We're, again, we're not proposing a rezoning. The two properties that Buckingham Retail Properties has under agreement and which give its standing to pursue this petition are the, called the Myers Property, the Eagle Peak Spring Water Property, and the former Jaren Family Residence. Those two properties comprise an entire C4 district, which you created, or your predecessor board created back in 1992, along with several other C4 districts. We first reviewed our proposal at the Planning Commission meeting on February 23. We had a rather extensive and lengthy discussion that evening. Residents were not afforded an ample opportunity to express their concerns at that meeting, so we had a second meeting on March 23rd, at which the residents presented their PowerPoint. There were only three Planning Commission members present at that meeting. Following that meeting, although the Planning Commission voted three to zero ultimately, and I'm not sure whether there was ever a legal opinion rendered on the validity of that vote, since one of the Planning Commission members had said, "I abstain," and then decided he was going to change his mind. So I asked for a follow-up hearing, and on April 7th, I sent the revised ordinance to Stephanie Mason. As Jeff indicated, we had now changed and eliminated the large retail store as a proposal. That was primarily in response, frankly, to comments we had heard from Planning Commission members who had said they would like to see something smaller. Admittedly, they did not say we'd like to see a 10,000-square-foot store, which in theory would be permitted under the amendment because a retail store, UC1, is anything under 10,000 square feet. We also added additional criteria to address a concern that several of the Planning Commissioners had, and that is whether there would be other properties in the township that were zoned C4 that might qualify for the uses that we were proposing. And especially the, that is especially the E20 motor vehicle fueling center use. We believe that, as initially drafted, there were no such properties that would meet those criteria. However, we did propose a minor amendment, which would require, as one of the conditions for the conditional use, that the property have frontage on, be located first at an intersection, and second, that that intersection be comprised of two roads that met the clock, the definitions of arterial or collector roads from your subdivision and land development ordinance. Planning Commission reviewed that again on May 20th, so we probably spent nine, 10 hours with the Planning Commission, I guess, on this proposal. And they listened carefully, they listened to our explanations. We did not, however, get a chance to review with the Planning Commission the preliminary land development plans, which we had filed with the initial petition for amendment, or about the same time. And I just want to say a word about that. If I had submitted this amendment without the benefit of a plan, I think the first question I would have heard was, "Well, what are you proposing? What's supposed to happen?" So we took the step, my client went to the trouble of illustrating what could be done at this particular C4 district, not on any other C4 district, but on this particular C4 district, under the criteria that we had included within our ordinance. Planning Commission, I think, looked at this, although we spent a lot of time on the plan and the concept and the concerns, and presented a lot of information that was digested by the Planning Commission, we did not go to, into a detailed review of the preliminary plans. We do have review letters, however, from your consultants, and you may or may not have taken the time to review those. This is the first time that we have presented to this Board of Supervisors. I think everybody else in this room has probably sat through a number of hours worth of presentations, or most of them have. You're the only ones who haven't, with the exception of Mr. Kellella, who did sit through. I think, if not all of them, at least two of the Planning Commission meetings, probably all three. So we're, some, to some extent, this is a repeat for most of the people in the audience, but it is not a repeat for you. I know you have the benefit of some written information. You haven't had the benefit of any of our verbal presentation, our testimony, or our explanation, nor have you had the benefit of any rebuttal to some of the comments that were the basis of the Planning Commission motion, some of which, frankly, we had already addressed, but we'll try to do so again today. With that background, I wanted to make it clear to the board, I'm not expecting a decision on this application tonight. Frankly, I'm not sure whether you're going to have the time to hear from us and from all the residents and give them the full hearing that the Planning...
Well, we're going to take the time.
What?
We're going to hear from you all.
That's good.
Tonight.
That's excellent. Because we're ready to go, as long as you're ready to go.
We'll go on then.
Okay, good. We will. We had hoped to, at the end of the testimony, hear from the individual board members with your concerns, to see what concerns you have that we might be able to address. We have, as I indicated, listened to residents' concerns. Many of the concerns are matters which we pointed out are addressed more appropriately in land development. But as an illustration, we have gone back to the, to Wawa, to my client here, Mr. Verchio, whom I'll introduce to you in a minute, and talked about some of the things that we have heard. One of the things that the residents have been concerned about is how do we know we're going to get this big buffer that's shown on your plan? Well, our short answer is it's in the ordinance. You have to get it. But we intended to offer and would, would offer the deed restriction on approximately two and a half acres which back up to Tedwill Road to be sure that you get that buffer. There, as Mr. Garten can explain to you, there are ways that we can accomplish this. There are ways that you can guarantee that you get the plan that we offered before you vote on the ordinance amendment, if you choose to proceed in that fashion, and that's one of the reasons we presented the plan. There were residents at one of the initial meetings of a Mr. New, who lives in one of the houses on Tedwill Road that backs up to the property, which is proposed to be developed here. He said, "What about providing public water to some of us who don't have public water who are right next to your site?" That info, that information has also been reviewed internally. And we were prepared to, in connection with the land development plan, offer a commitment to those residents whose properties abut our property on Tedwill, to work with them, to connect them to public water, to alleviate one of their initial concerns that they have, since they're the most immediately affected. Again, those are just two examples of the kinds of commitments that we're prepared to make, and they are site-specific, admittedly. But that is, the people in the audience are, in my view, more concerned with the site specifics than they are with the overview of the ordinance, which is really a planning exercise. One of the things I did not do at the Planning Commission meeting, because he was a little shy and sat in the back room, was introduce Tom Verchio to you. Tom is the principal of Buckingham Retail Properties. He is also the principal in the Verchio Companies. Buckingham Retail Properties is, I'll call it the real estate arm of the Verchio Company. It's the entity in which Tom enters into agreements to develop properties, but the Verchio Company is his company and it will be the developer. Tom is here in the front row, for those who can't see him. He and his wife and three children live in Buckingham Township. He is a local man with a lot of local ties. He's an experienced commercial residential developer. He manages retail properties. Some of the things that he is not, doesn't like to brag about too much, but probably should, is he served as a member of the Building Committee for Our Lady of Wadale when they're planning for the church at the intersection of 413 and Cold Spring Creamery Road. He served in a similar capacity on the Building Committee of St. Cyril of Jerusalem in Warwick Township, assisted them in that project. He's been active in the community and in community affairs. This is not a out-of-town developer who's coming in front of you with this proposal, it's somebody who lives in your community. It is not a turnkey operation. This isn't a property or project that Tom's company will continue to own. He will, the persons, the tenants will be, tenants underground leases, but they will not be owning the properties, and Tom is not going to be going anywhere. One of the concerns that came up at the last Planning Commission meeting was kind of a surprise to us, was the concern that was expressed, I think Mr. Kelso at the Planning Commission expressed it, I've since heard from Stephanie, that it was a concern that others had heard too. And that is that Wawa was looking at a different site, that they were looking at a site on Easton Road in Cross Keys. And how do we know that you're going to get a Wawa? We went back, and first of all, Tom confirmed with Wawa, who is represented here tonight by Mike Riddell, Riddell, in the back room though, that Wawa is not looking at any other sites. Secondly, there is a side lease for this property. Wawa is committed to this site. Wawa, although is obviously a larger company than Tom's company, is also a company that has a lengthy history of active participation in community support. So you've got a hometown developer here and a quality user. And the one thing I think that I can say is that consistent from all the comments we heard, nobody has an issue with the way Wawa conducts business. It's really a question of the impact that it may or may not have on people who live nearby. And that's a question that comes up with every development, whether it's in connection with the zoning change or in connection with a land development proposal. And we would expect to hear those kinds of concerns. The project team that are going to help me tonight with our presentation are Bowler Engineering, represented tonight by Adam Bonofsky, Glack and Thomas and Panzak, our land planners, represented by Dennis Glack and a principal, our traffic engineer, McMahon Associates, represented by Jennifer Walsh, and to the extent that we get into and have the environmental questions that were raised by the, some of the residents and which may be issues with the board, we have two representatives of Apex, Tom Ford, a professional geologist, and Kate Engler, a PhD in environmental health. Both of them, Apex was retained to address some of the concerns that were the subject of the residents' PowerPoint that had been presented at the March Planning Commission meeting. And if you read our PowerPoint, you saw some of the Apex slides. Again, a number of the things that were addressed in the Apex reports and on the Apex slides are essentially land development issues, but the reason we went to the step of showing or presenting that testimony was to show that there are ways to address those concerns. Those can be done during land development process. They could also be incorporated into a zoning ordinance amendment, although I think technical things like that are more proper than land development questions rather than ordinance issues. With regard to the amendment, before I ask Adam to start helping me, the, as I said in my introduction, early part of my introduction, the C4 district was created initially in 1992. It's called the Office and Medical Professional District. This particular C4 district was changed from R1, which is the zoning of the properties that surround it. The intent of the ordinance was to, this is, I'm reading from the, from, from the ordinance, "The intent was to provide for professional office and medical facilities needed to serve the township and the surrounding community." That was the vision. Obviously, there was not a specific proposal in front of you. And that was a, an amendment which, if I recall, and I recall some of the discussions at that time, was generated from the Planning Commission primarily and ultimately adopted by the board. There was a vision, but there wasn't a development proposal in front of you at the time, that I can recall, that was the catalyst for that change. So the ordinance reflected a vision. I would suggest to you that many of the permitted uses, the uses already permitted, are not exactly consistent or not at all consistent with that particular vision. That was a point that we discussed with the Planning Commission, and I think frankly, some of the Commissioners probably agreed with us. The past 23 years that have elapsed now since 1992 evidenced the fact that that vision, the vision of the Planning Commission, was not shared by those people who are the users of real estate. The only, the property, the Myers Property, and you all know that the Eagles Peak folks have been active members of the community for a long time. Their property has been on the market now for six or seven years, I don't recall exactly how long. I know I've represented one person who actually, one company that had it under agreement, another who was looking at it and got it during due diligence. And the only uses that, the only offers that they've entertained or had any interest on were people who were interested in retail. The Jaren property was owned residential, it has a house on it, as you know, and again, the only interest in that property had been for commercial, retail development. There are those who say, "Well, the fact that nobody's done it doesn't mean the zoning is inappropriate." But I suggest to you that there are two ways to determine whether zoning is appropriate. One is to change it and see whether anything happens, or two, to respond to a specific proposal. Responding to a specific proposal is certainly a time-honored way of amending zoning ordinances. Some townships, that's probably the only way you get amendments, and they look at each proposal, they evaluate the plan, they come up with the right plan for the property, the right safeguards to protect the community, and they enact an amendment and consistent with that proposal. In any event, you also have to look at the fact that what has changed in the last 23 years at the corner of Ferry Road and Swamp Road. What you've seen there is changes in zoning in New Britton Township to facilitate a retail and office development. You've seen a proposal in Plumstead Township, also in a zoning district that was, didn't exist in 1992, to put a strip commercial center in Plumstead Township. You already have the far corner where there's an old, where building's been used as restaurants for years. You have Herman Silverman's office development, which probably is just about the same timeframe as the 1992 amendment for C4. So you've got a corner that doesn't look anything like it looked in 1992. It's, it's a reflection of the fact that this is an appropriate place to provide uses for which there is a need, not just in the township, but as the statement of intent in the C4 office district suggested, consideration the needs of the surrounding community. You're a part of Bucks County, you know that, and you know that your, that particular area has some unique characteristics that are not shared by most of the rest of Doylestown I'm going to stop there with the understanding that I may want to offer some additional comments as we move through. I'd like to start with Adam Bonofsky from Bowler. We have, we'll be using part of our PowerPoint, and we're not going to be wedded to the PowerPoint, we're not going to read every sentence in the PowerPoint.
Thank you.
I know that some of you don't have a patience for that kind of presentation, so we have no intent of doing that.
And we can read.
Yes, you can.
We can do it ourselves.
You can, and that's, so that's why we're going to focus on keeping these comments briefer, with a view toward giving... a view toward giving you an overview of where we are and how we got here.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you. And if my witnesses start to get wordy, I'll try to interrupt them, although I'm sure you'll do the same.
We'll, they'll be fine. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it, John. We need lights. Dimming of lights, please. Thanks, Ed.
My name is Adam Bonoski. I'm a principal with Boulder Engineering. We're responsible for the site plans that were submitted in support of the zoning change and also the land development plans that were submitted. I'm going to quickly run through some of these slides. Most of my presentation is just to give you a background on the existing features and the proposed features, and I'll try to keep it relatively quick.
Essentially, Adam, focusing on how the site plan that we have here illustrates what we've proposed in the ordinance, because I think that's really the matter that's most of interest.
Sure.
That didn't take long for you to come back.
Do you want it?
Come on, Adam, you can do it.
All right. So the slide that you see in front of you denotes the site. The site is located in the dashed yellow line. Orientation, we have Swamp Road to the top of the sheet, which is also the north, the northeast, and then Ferry Road to the left of the slide. This is the existing Eagle Peak facility here, and what's hard to see is there's a residential structure in the back. We have Neil Road off to the right, and then Tedwell Drive in the back, and the residential properties in the back here. You'll see that a large portion of this site is wooded, and as I go through the proposed features, you'll see that we're maintaining quite a bit of the wooded area in the back. Existing site features, the site essentially drains from a high point along Neil Drive, and it pitches to the intersection of Swamp and Ferry Road. It's about a 20 feet of fall from the high point in the back here to the intersection here. And all the water drains today towards that intersection. Also, what's not shown on here, which is important, is the commercial to the northeast of us, the Bailey Square newly developed site. This is an older aerial. The slide that you see before you, same orientation, Swamp Road on the top of the sheet, Ferry Road on the side, Tedwell on the bottom, the residences in the back, and Neil Road located here. Walking you through the site, the proposed Wawa is located here. It's about 4,900 square feet, just under 5,000 square feet. That's the building and the structure here. And then in front of it is the fuel dispensing canopy, the canopy that is over the dispensers, which is located here. The proposed pharmacy is located on the right-hand side of the slide. This is different from the plans that were submitted originally. We have revised this to reduce the square footage of that pharmacy to under 10,000 square feet, which allowed us to slide that building further away from Neil Drive. Kind of walking you around the site, we have an entrance that's located here. This is a vehicular entrance, as well as sidewalks with pedestrian access. This access mirrors what's across the street at Bailey Square. You can see it, it's faint, but to the top of the sheet, that is the entrance drive. This is a full movement, with the exception of left turns out, so you can make a right in, you can make a right out, and you can make a left in, but you cannot make a left out of this drive. Our second access is located on Swamp Road, excuse me, on Ferry Road, which is located here, with an access drive that comes in behind both stores and then connects to the access out to Swamp. This is a full movement intersection. I'm not going to get into a lot of the improvements. I'll let Jan Walsh from McMahon get into that along the road, but we do have road improvements along our frontage on Swamp and Ferry Road, extension of right turn lanes and left turn lanes for access into our site. One of the biggest features I want to point out is the limit of the access road in the back and the extensive area that we are leaving wooded. It is wooded today. The woods are proposed to remain. There are some areas where there were less trees, you know, less dense, and what we're proposing is essentially a reforestation of those areas that's located here, along the property line, and then back behind the pharmacy. Those aren't areas where we're taking down trees, those are areas where we're adding additional evergreens and deciduous trees.
And that's the area where I'd indicated there'd be a willingness to impose the deed restriction, and that's this whole area back here, so we can't switch buffers or push the buildings around and take the trees down.
So just to give you an idea of scale, the property line to the residential properties in the rear of the site is located here. Distance to the actual Wawa building is over 300 feet, 306 feet to be exact. We're 225 feet to the actual right-of-way building, and from the edge of the curb line to any structure or curbing, we're over 175 feet. So that total area is about 175 feet at its minimum point. The line here is the, what is required for us to maintain as a buffer. So what's required by ordinance is a 50-foot buffer, and we're providing, as I mentioned, over 175 feet for that buffer area.
That'd be a special buffer, if you're under our ordinance, applicable to these two uses.
That is correct.
You need to do that to the microphone if you're going to make substantial comments like that, that need to be recorded.
The comment was that in the conditional use criteria in our draft ordinance, we required these special buffers. Development for other uses in C1 or C4 in accordance with the current ordinance could have a setback in buffer that would come as far back as the line that Adam just pointed out to you.
Thank you.
Adam, is the buffer on Neil, the same distance, what's the?
No, and I was just about to get into that. So the buffer on Neil, which is located in this area, as I mentioned, we reduced the size of the pharmacy, which we were able to add, since the last plans that were presented, we've added a little bit over 20 feet of buffer. So from the actual right-of-way line to the right-of-way or proposed pharmacy, we are 109 feet from the right-of-way, and to the actual driveway, which is here that goes around the pharmacy, we're 48 feet. And to the actual roadbed or the curb line of Neil Drive, that's 65 feet. So that area is extensively planted, as you'll see. We've added a lot more plant material, evergreen buffers, and deciduous trees to that area.
And once again, Mr. Snyder, the difference being the fact that there is a right-of-way there. So when you add the right-of-way to the buffer that we provided, the distance separation is substantially more than just the buffer. So we have the ability to put a substantial buffer in, and the separation distance between the nearest residence and the building is significant, again, significantly greater than the current building setback.
Just a couple of the quick items I'll point out with regard to the buffer. We've also added, along the edge of this drive, we've added a privacy fence, a six-foot screen fence, which would be additive to the landscaping that was in this vicinity. A couple of the things to point out since our last presentation, we have added a, with the bike and hike and sidewalk conversation, we've added a bike and hike trail along our entire frontage of both Ferry Road and Swamp Road, and then also along Neil Road up to our property line. In addition, we have sidewalks, it's a little bit difficult to see, but sidewalks that come in, and you can circumnavigate through the site to both uses, and then sidewalk that comes out to Ferry Road. Touch on lighting a little bit, there were some questions about lighting. Both facilities will be lit, sight lighting with state-of-the-art LED sightlights. They will be mounting height of 15 feet, which is not typical of commercial uses. Commercial uses are more in the 25 to 30-foot range, but we're putting them, you know, at 15-foot mounting height, which is really the minimum height that you can do to have an effective lighting plan without having too many fixtures. Stormwater management was a question that's come up, so I'm just going to walk you through just, you know, high-level type of discussion on stormwater management. As I mentioned, the site drains from essentially the back area here up towards Ferry Road. What we're proposing for a stormwater management system is to have two bioretention basins. The first one being the one located here, and that would take the majority of the water from the pharmacy area and the roadway in the back, and that would drain to that. The bioretention system is not only a stormwater management system to retain the water, slow down the rate of the water, but it's also a filtration system. The water will filtrate through that. We have done extensive geotechnical investigations to determine perk rates, to see if we can infiltrate stormwater. We do have a significant amount of rock here, so we have some limiting factors. So what we've done is we've added a significant amount of soil amendment to this area, which will help absorb the water and percolate it into where the existing soils are, our limiting factor being the rock, which is about eight to 10 feet below the surface. In addition to this basin that's taking the majority of this area, we have water quality inlets. Those inlets are equipped with devices that would stop solids from getting through the system and sumps that would trap solids in them, and they would be periodically cleaned out. And then on the Wawa portion of the site, the majority of this drains to the basin that's in the front of the site, same type of system, bioretention system, some percolation, but mostly a management and a filtration system in the soil medium. And then finally, there's been a lot of conversation about the area within the pump station, the fuel pumping facility, through our last meetings and through communications with Wawa and the developer. What we've done is, the area that is directly in front of the Wawa here, which includes all the areas that the pump is in, the canopy and the fuel dispensing, that entire area drains to two inlets. There's one here, and there's one here. They are interconnected, and they drain through a oil-water separator. It's a 2,000-gallon system that all that water that hits that pavement or drains off of that area would go through this system, filter the water, take out the, any pollutants that would be on that pavement, and then put it into the bioretention area where it would get treated once again before it would leave the site into the road's network of piping systems. So the system that we've designed not only meets the township ordinance requirements, it meets the Nishamity Creek ordinance, which is a county-based stormwater management system, and will have to submit to the County Conservation District and ultimately to DEP for a permit, and they will all review the stormwater. The system's been designed and submitted. Obviously, we need to go through the land development process for that, but that will be vetted through all those agencies that I mentioned. And that's really just an overview of the site. If anybody has any specific questions before I step aside and turn it over, I'd be happy to answer them.
And just one more question. If you look at this site today and working with the residents, was there any issues today that create problems for them that you haven't figured in, or maybe there aren't any? Is there anything happening today that you need to also remedy, other than what you're proposing here?
I can tell you what I've heard from the meetings, and I was at all of the meetings except for one, we heard only things about the proposed use. I did not hear anything that was existing problems that we would need to mitigate, but if there are any, you know, we're here to help.
To expand on that point, anything about, you obviously touched about buffer size and so on, what about, and rainwater runoff, what about lighting and obvious things, maybe you can't answer, you know, but there's concerns and that kind of thing.
Yeah, and I haven't taken a look at, we didn't do a lighting study on the existing commercial facility that's there. I don't know when their lights are on and when their lights are off. I do know there is sight lighting there, I can tell you that, I can't tell you what the design is. But I can say that we heard the concerns with lighting, and as I mentioned, with the state-of-the-art LED system, we can get a lot more detail on that for you, but these are systems that aren't like your typical high-pressure sodium where you get the glare, you get the night sky effect. The LED is more of a muted, it doesn't require the houseside shields because the lighting is up inside of the actual unit, so you don't see the light source. It's really, you know, if you look at lighting, the old days of high-pressure sodium and metal halide where you get that glow, you just don't get the same effect with LED. And again, the mounting height is such that, really to go any lower on a mounting height, you would have so many fixtures to cover the ground, to make a safe environment, that you'd be adding so many that you kind of counter what you're trying to achieve by less lights.
Adam, just to, although this is probably obvious, 15 feet is substantially below the height of the trees that are between the property owners, the people along Tedwell and these proposed buildings, correct? If there are no questions from Mr. Bonoski, I'm going to ask Dennis Glacken to provide a planning perspective on our proposal and some of the review comments and discussion points that were raised by Planning Commission members and your reviewers in a general sense. Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Bonoski. That was very well done.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Dennis Glacken.
Hello.
How are you? You probably don't know me. I've been a planner in this region for about 40 years. I started out as the planner and later the planning director of Laura Marion Township in Montgomery County. I've worked in the private sector in Philadelphia and started my own firm about 23 years ago. We're located in Paoli, and we're land planners and landscape architects. What I'd like to do is go through some of the planning issues that have been raised in the review letters and by the Planning Commission, and try and provide our perspective on the comments that we've heard to date. The existing conditions of the property, Alan, Adam went through the site, the specific site, and I know you're all familiar with the area, but I do want to point out the variety of uses that are out there today. The executive center, which is located in Plumstead Township, which is item number one, which is an office development, restaurant at the corner of Ferry and Swamp, the CVS retail stores, restaurant, and again, more offices at the Fountainville Village. Across the street, across Swamp Road, you have the newly developed Bailey Square Shopping Center, which has nail spa, advanced auto parts, uses like that. Our site is number seven, the single-family residences, and you have a substantial amount of residential development just off the site, again, in Plumstead, the overlook at Carriage Hill and Patriots Ridge. So to make the point again that John made earlier in terms of changes in this area since 1992, and I certainly wasn't around then, but other than the restaurant, probably none of these things were there at that point. The existing zoning in the area, again, is a, it's a real mixture. You have three townships, you're coming together at a point of the intersection of Ferry and Swamp Road, so this isn't unusual, but you do have a number of different zoning districts occurring in this area. You have R5 where the residential development has occurred for overlook. You have a strip of village commercial along Swamp Road, partly opposite the site, which allows uses like apartments, townhouses, offices, restaurants, things of that nature. C1 is where the Bailey Square Shopping Center and the restaurant is located. That's also in Plumstead, it allows medical offices, daycare, retail stores, restaurants, bars, and taverns. In New Britton Township is the OP District, the Office Park District, and that is located along pretty much the entire frontage in New Britton Township. And then you have their watershed district to the south, and up in Plumstead Township, you have a rural residential district. C4 is our corner, and R1 is the zoning around it. So there's a mixture of zoning out there, there's a mixture of uses permitted. For instance, in New Britton Township, you're allowed to do theaters, hotels, warehouses, and offices. So there's, in terms of the intensity and the type of uses that are allowed in the three townships, they're quite varied. One of the questions that came up was, well, if we change, if we allow these uses in C4, where else could we have a Wawa or a similar development in Doylestown Township? So we prepared a couple of maps to address that. The major limiting factor, other than a minimum size of three acres, is the fact that you have to be at an intersection of a regional, two types, a regional arterial, a community arterial, or a community collector road. All these roads are designated in your subdivision land development ordinance, they're listed in there, so what we've done is kind of color-coded the roads in the areas where C4 is found today. 611, this is an area of the Doylestown Hospital. 611- 611 is obviously a regional arterial. West State Street from 611 to the Barrow Line is a community arterial. And you have a community collector road in Butler Avenue as you come out of the Barrow. This portion of West State Street is not in any of the three streets that's listed. This is West State Street, but it's quite clear in your ordinance that it's only the portion of West State Street for the Barrow to 611. Obviously, the biggest area here is the hospital and the associated medical uses around the hospital. So in terms of what the C4 district was trying to accomplish in '92, it's certainly accomplished at this location because this is truly, you could say, almost like a medical office district with the hospital. There's one property here that has come up in terms of could that be developed, and I have a slide on that that I'll show you a little later. And most of these sites are already developed. This little community in here is developed, but again, they don't have the required frontage on the major streets. The other areas in the township is along Swamp Road. Our site's at the top of this slide, which we've talked about. The other area is down by the Bailey Wick Office Development and the School District Transportation Site. Bailey Wick is fully developed. It's on 611 and Swamp Road, so in theory that would qualify, but it's a developed site. So that leaves our site, which is underdeveloped, partially undeveloped on Swamp and Ferry Road as the site where these uses could occur. Another concern, and John touched on this, so I'll go through this really quickly, is T-Wiz guys, this is called an office and medical district. Why are you putting a Wawa here? And the uses that have been, that are allowed today in this district include things like a warehouse by special exception, a utility operating facility, sewage treatment plant, water tower, non-tower wireless communication, wind energy, commercial school, financial establishment, banquet facility, daycare service. Clearly, none of these are hospital-related uses, and these are in your ordinance today. So when I look at this, it seems to me that whatever the initial intent was, it's clearly changed over the years. And whether these were in the ordinance initially or had been added over the years, I'm not sure, but clearly this is not a medical professional use at this location. The comprehensive plan has come up a number of times. Is this consistent with the comprehensive plan? Your comprehensive plan is dated 1989. There is, there were some amendments in 2008 where other independent studies that had been done regarding parks and recreation and open space were made parts of the comprehensive plan, but the original body was prepared in '89. The plan actually hit the nail right on the head in 1989 in terms of sites like this. And I just want to read one paragraph to you. This is on page 20 under future development trends of the 1989 plan. And it's called redevelopment of areas. Some of the areas along the major roads, Route 61, Swamp Road and Route 202 will be subject to redevelopment proposals as former residences are transformed into commercial establishments where small-scale commercial uses are redeveloped into unified and more intense commercial development. As this happens, two critical concerns emerge: the appearance of the redeveloped area and the access to roadways. Signs, buffers, parking lot design, control of access to larger roads and management of traffic will become concerns of the township as this process occurs. So that's exactly what's happening here. You had a site that wasn't fully developed, being more intensely developed by this proposal. And the areas that they're suggesting that are important are part of the land development process, the sides, the buffers, the parking lot layout and so forth. So we've taken the approach that this application is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Your consultants have reviewed it and have made comments on various objectives and goals of the comprehensive plan. There's virtually no impact on the natural features, other than the removal of trees. There's no floodplain, there's no wetlands, there's no steep slopes on the property. It's well-suited from an access and utility standpoint. Proposed development plan is consistent with existing commercial uses on Swamp Road, which we just went over, and the extensive buffering and landscaping from residential district, which is basically four times the required setback that's required under the ordinance. So, and if you look at the Boucher and James review letters, they would agree with what I just said in terms of their take on it being consistent with the, generally consistent with the comprehensive plan. Suggestions were made that, well, don't put it in C4, put it in C1, maybe that's a better place for it. Well, right now, the definition of E10, which is your service station use, really doesn't allow a Wawa-type use. E10 talks about it being convenience sales, being an accessory to the use, and it can only occupy half the building, and it has to be in place of things like selling of tires. And they talk about repairs, painting, junk vehicles, tire sales. So it's a, it's a good definition for, I guess, a 1950s and 60s service station, but it doesn't fit what we're proposing. So right now, you could make the argument that the Wawa-type uses are permitted under the ordinance. John mentioned that the retail shop has been restricted to less than 10,000 square feet. Certainly, retail stores are very common in most commercial districts, so that doesn't seem to be much of a concern. And whether there are there existing properties in the C1 district that are available for these uses. So we did a kind of a high-level study of your other C1 zones to see what's available there if you decided that this should be in the C1 district, for instance. And there's about four slides where we went through areas of the township, showed sites that were either vacant and whether they were viable or not viable based on Wawa's program in terms of frontage, size of the lot, access, things of that nature, and whether there's existing uses. This is the section of C1, 611, along Swamp Road that reaches down towards the Barrow of Dorsetown. All these areas are developed, there's no vacant property there. And I certainly realize that any site could be redeveloped and sites could be combined and so forth, but given what's out there today, it's developed. The second area we looked at was on 263 York Road and Edison Furlong up to Swamp Road. There is vacant ground in this area.
I think the board's pretty familiar with that area, so I think, I think you've seen one or two developments.
So the big brown area is, as you know, subject to a proposal before you today. The other one at the lower part of the screen is at best oddly shaped, doesn't have a lot of the necessary frontage on the road, and again, in our opinion, wasn't a viable site. This is an area along Southeastern Road, Turk Road is at the top of this slide, Eastern Road. And again, the combination of floodplain restrictions and existing development make this area really unsuitable, or I shouldn't say unsuitable, but not available for any type of Wawa development. And the final one is an area south of there, this be at Eastern Edison Furlong Road, 611. There's one parcel, which is partially the floodplain and partially has a guide rail on the front of it as you cross into the Shavati Creek at this location, which makes its use, again, very problematical. The comments have come up, well, this is a very intense use, it's a 24/7 operation, it conflicts with existing uses. I'd only make the point that, again, it's consistent with commercial uses nearby. This currency for use allows 24/7 or certainly extended hours such as nursing homes, hospitals, banquet facilities, which would be more than, say, your normal business hour type operations. And to deal with some of the concerns with the hours of operation, the attempt was with the buffer and the setback, which is about almost five times what's required. Your ordinance states in the C4 district that if a C4 district abuts at R1 district or residential district, that the rear yard setback gets increased from 30 to 50 feet. Our rear yard setback's been increased to 242 feet. And just to put that in some perspective, your quarry district, for instance, requires a hundred-foot setback from a property line. So you take the most intense or nasty use or however you want to characterize it in the township, and this is greatly an extent of what those uses are required to have in terms of a setback. Some comments on the marketing, why Wawa's looking at this site, which I'm not going to go through, but they're in your book and you can look at. This is the other property that came, that keeps coming up in terms of, well, couldn't a Wawa be developed at this site? And this is the, some people call it the burpee track, Ford Hook Farm. And the simple answer is it can't because it doesn't have the frontage. It doesn't have the intersection of two of the streets that are required. It's a long rectangular piece. It's very close to the Dorsetown Hospital, it's across 611 at the top of the slide. Again, a lot of medical office-type uses here, but it simply doesn't have the frontage that's required under the ordinances that have been drafted. We heard comments that this is spot zoning, that you're, you're making special legislation for this use. As John said, there's no change in the zoning district. There's two additional uses being permitted, but the zoning is not changing in terms of the district and its use. It's located at the intersection of two major streets, which would distinguish the site from other properties that might say, well, why not me? The road location is consistent with your current ordinance in terms of how you use streets to say whether a use is permitted or not. The E10 use requires you to be on an arterial street. So our proposed use is requiring you to be on two streets to deal with any issues with traffic that might come up. And certainly limiting fueling stations to major streets related to traffic management, I think, is sound planning. What happens to the property of, how do we know Wawa's going to go here? The township will pass this ordinance and Wawa will disappear and it'll go somewhere else, and you'll get something else at this site. All we can do is say, A, Wawa has no intention of doing that, and I'm sure John and Tom can expand on that if needed, but the ordinance, as you review the ordinance, you'll review it for whether it's a Wawa or not a Wawa in terms of what would go on the site and what safeguards you think should be there in terms of buffers and setbacks, access and so forth. And all of those would be either in your ordinance or part of the way a development plan, and the buffer, and the developer is in any event agreeing to de-restrict 2.35 acres of the back to be permanent open space and undisturbed. So to conclude the, kind of the planning part of this, we think the development is consistent with the comprehensive plan, that these are uses that the plan expected to see, or certainly the more intense uses that have been there. Your consultants agree with that. They believe it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. So what was written 26 years ago is coming to pass here. The proposed use is consistent with other commercial locations. I think we beat that to death. Motor vehicle station is only allowed in the C1 district, but not the way it's written in your ordinance today. And in any event, there's really no viable alternative sites, even in the C1 district for a Wawa use. Other C4 zone properties could not accommodate it. We've tried to, again, right this so that it's not something that can go in many places in the township, again, at the direction of the comments we heard from the planning commission. And some review comments are in the Bucks County Planning Commission letter. The setbacks and buffering are quite extensive. I mean, these are things that we're done to react to the fact that we're, we are adjacent to residential development. And we're trying to do everything we can in terms of the lighting, the buffering, the setbacks, to mitigate any impacts that might occur as a result of this plan. And we think this is a really good location in terms of the road access, it has utility availability, and just the lack of other viable properties in the township for this use. So for those reasons, we would hope you'd be able to consider this favorably.
Thank you.
I'm going to come back at the end of this presentation to the comprehensive plan issue, but I would point out that one of the comments in the Boucher and James review under section two, where they talked about consistency with the comprehensive plan, comment D, talked about the effect of local traffic on the area and the need to evaluate that in keeping with the goal of the comprehensive plan. This board should consider the improvements needed to address the safety of both vehicular and pedestrian traffic. So with that, I'm going to introduce Jennifer Walsh. Jennifer did a significant amount of work. Jennifer is with McMahon Associates, a well-respected transportation and engineering firm. Jennifer did an initial review of this area, took some traffic counts along the two roads. She'll tell you exactly what she did. She came to our meetings, she listened to the neighbors. There was a concern about cut-through. She will tell you what she found. In addressing that issue, we did supplemental studies in order to try to address those concerns. I'm going to ask Jennifer not to read her 150 or 200 pages, but to give you a good solid summary of what she did and supplementing that then with what improvements, if any, are, in her opinion, necessary. And finally, addressing the concern, the cut-through that was raised by some of the neighbors.
Thank you, John.
Welcome.
Good evening. As John said, my name is Jennifer Walsh, and I'm with McMahon Associates. I'm a senior project manager in their traffic department. And tonight, I want to basically go over two studies that we had conducted. The first one being the traffic impact study that is required by the township in PennDOT for a proposed development such as this. And the second study is a smaller study that we were asked to conduct as a result of some concerns raised at the planning commission meeting. So I'm first going to walk through the traffic impact study and the methodology used to evaluate the proposed development, summarize our results and present to you the recommendations and conclusions of our study. I do want to say that prior to even beginning the study, we coordinated with the township traffic engineer in PennDOT on the exact scope of work that was expected of us, to make sure that before we even got started, that we were, we had a scope of work that was in adherence to the township requirements and PennDOT requirements. Actually, we even expanded the scope of work as a result of a township request to add another peak period. So we typically would study the AM peak, the PM peak and a Saturday midday. The township traffic engineer also requested that we study the midday peak during a typical weekday, and we agreed to do that as well. The first thing we do before we do any evaluation is we go out and do our data collection exercise, which means we collect all of our manual turning movement counts during the peak periods in addition to getting field sketches, photographs and sight distance measurements of the proposed accesses. As I stated, the four peak periods that we studied were the AM peak, which is typically 7:00 to 9:00 AM in the morning. We looked at a weekday midday peak, so we also studied 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM on a typical weekday. We did a weekday afternoon count from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM, and we also studied a Saturday count between 11:00 AM and 2:00 PM. So we gathered all that data at the study area intersection of Swamp and Ferry and some of the surrounding intersections. Once we gather all that data, we basically move on and evaluate three different conditions, which is typical of any traffic impact study. We look at what's happening out there today, we look at the existing conditions. We then move on and look at a future scenario without the development. And this provides a basis of comparison for how the proposed development is going to impact the surrounding roadways. And then we add the traffic on that's going to be generated by our development, and we do a future with development conditions evaluation. I also want to point out that we studied two different horizon years as well. We not only studied the expected opening year of the development, which is 2016, but we also looked five years into the future to 2021, which provides us a more conservative evaluation of how traffic is going to be operating in that, in that five-year period of time. And the purpose of evaluating this is kind of threefold. It's to impact, basically to identify the impact of the proposed development on the surrounding roadways, to subsequently identify needed improvements at the surrounding intersections in order to mitigate that impact. And then third, to make sure that the proposed accesses of the development are going to operate acceptably and in accordance with the township and PennDOT's requirements. I'm still on this slide, I'm not reading this slide, so. Once we move on to the under the future with development scenario, the first thing we do is we estimate the trips that are going to be generated by our proposed development. And the way that we do that is we utilize a trip generation manual that is put out by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. This is a national publication with hundreds and hundreds of studies of similar land uses across the country. This is a manual that I would say any traffic engineer that's doing a traffic impact study is going to use to generate their trips. What is also important to note about the trip generation for a site What is also important to note about the trip generation for a site and a proposed land use such as this is that the majority of the trips, I would say approximately 50% to 60% of the trips that are generated by this development are considered pass-by trips. And what that means is that the pass-by trips are already on the roadway network. There are already vehicles that are traveling to and from work that are passing through this intersection and are now going to stop off and get their cup of coffee or fill up on gas when this development is put in place. The remaining trips are considered new trips. And just to give you an idea of the impact of the development, the trip generation is estimated to add two to three new trips per minute to the overall roadway network. So we're talking about, on average, between 130 and 180 new trips during the peak hour.
Say that again, 130 new trips?
Depending on the peak period, approximately 130 to about 170 new trips per peak hour are going to occur.
Per peak hour?
For the peak, for the four peaks that we studied, yeah.
130 for all four or 130 for each of them?
No, 130 for each of them, for each of them, right. And depending on the peak, it varies in the amount of trip generation that's occurring.
Can you give us a, just a, how does that compare to the existing traffic volume in terms of percentages?
Why, I'm going to be, I am going to get into that, but in my, in my summary, the overall intersection in its worst peak and its highest volume peak is going to increase by less than 3%, just to give you an idea of the intersection impact. As Adam just-
The worst, it's coming south in the morning and going north at night.
Right.
Or west.
Right.
Whatever, east or west.
In addition, as part of our with-development analysis, we need to look at our proposed accesses and make sure that they're going to operate acceptably. As Adam had pointed out a little bit earlier, we do have a full movement access on Ferry Road. That access will provide a designated right turn lane into the development and will provide all movements. The access on the Swamp Road is, we will be providing a right turn lane, deceleration lane into the site in the eastbound direction, a left turn lane into the site in the westbound direction. And as Adam pointed out, all the movements are allowed with the exception of, there's a restricted egress movement to only right outs only. So with those configurations and with that design, all the proposed accesses are anticipated to operate at an acceptable level of service, dear better, during all four of the peaks, which meets the township and PennDOT criteria. The next step is looking at the impact on the intersection of Swamp and Ferry Road. And one of the requirements is to make sure that we mitigate any impact and basically bring the conditions back to the conditions without the development. So whatever improvements we need to identify, we need to identify them that would bring the conditions back to without development. So for Swamp and Ferry, we know that there's recently been an improvement of the southbound and northbound left turn lanes that have been constructed. We are also proposing a northbound right turn lane, which will help add capacity to the intersection. It will help reduce the queuing along Ferry Road and help mitigate our impact to bring the conditions back to an acceptable level of delay and overall level of service. So basically, the intersection of Swamp and Ferry will be operating the same or better as it was before this development would be put in place, given our proposed improvements. In addition, we will be modifying the signal timing as needed to adjust the signal timing with the new right turn lane. That's sort of a summary of what we're recommending for the TIS. I do want to say, from the very beginning, we started, before we started the study, we coordinated with the township. I want to kind of end by saying that we also have gone through a thorough review process with the township and PennDOT to provide comments, to provide input, and to accommodate those comments into our traffic impact study. I don't want to speak for the township traffic engineer, but I think through the comments that were provided and through discussions with him, I think we do have a consensus on what the results of our traffic impact study were and the recommendations that we're all moving forward with. In addition, we have committed to doing a post-development study at the request of the township, which will basically be a study that we have committed to do approximately six months after the opening of the development, to take a look at what the true impacts are of the development that's put in place. So we have committed to doing that. I guess before I talk about the other study, are there any questions about the TIS before I get into the additional study that we did? No? Okay. As I stated, we were also asked to do an additional study at the request of the township. And this request came at, after the planning commission meeting and several comments and concerns that were raised about the residential neighborhood that is basically behind our proposed development, that were concerns about cut-through traffic, there were concerns about speeding, and we were asked to do some additional studies to evaluate that condition. So before, before we got started again, I did coordinate with the township traffic engineer to make sure that we were all on the same page with the scope of work that was going to be presented. I wanted to make sure that we were collecting all the data that was needed and that we were doing everything that we were asked to do. So we did confirm the scope of work and we moved forward with three separate evaluations. The first one was, we did an additional traffic count at Ferry Road and Tedwell Road. So we studied all the same four peak periods and collected manual turning movement counts at that intersection. In addition, we conducted a speed study along Tedwell Road and Neal Drive. And the way we did that was simply laying down automatic traffic recorder counts that would record both volume and speed. And we did that over a period of several days, just to have a bigger sample size to determine what the speeding issues were along those two segments. And I guess third was the origin destination study that we conducted. So just to explain how we did the origin destination study, I think some of the concerns were traffic that was turning off a ferry on the Tedwell and making its way up to Swamp and Neal. So we had two people, one person at the intersection of Ferry Road and Tedwell Road and a person at the intersection of Swamp and Neal, during all four of the same peak periods that we studied in our traffic impact study, who were recording and noting the time of all the license plates that entered and exited those intersections. Okay? So they're recording them at both of the intersections, all the traffic coming in and out, noting what time, the exact time, the license plate number, and a description of the vehicle to make it easier to match it up in the future. We then basically summarized that data to find the matches. And finding the matches is what would indicate any kind of cut-through vehicle that is going through the development at a certain time. Once we found the matches, we also realized that, you know, a lot of the traffic coming in and out of the development is obviously residents. So we needed to drill down a little bit and take a look at, when we found a match, was that a true cut-through vehicle or was it simply a resident that may have been leaving through one intersection at 8:00 a.m. and coming back after an hour and a half at 9:00 a.m.? And we did find that there were several cases where that did occur, and therefore, because of the timing, we realized that that wasn't a cut-through traffic. If the times and the matches were within a few minutes of one another, that would be more likely to be a cut-through vehicle. So, once we conducted all that analysis, what we found was, for the intersection of Ferry and Tedwell Road, the intersection will operate at acceptable levels of service in all four of the peak periods during the future conditions. The speed study actually revealed that although there's a small amount of traffic that travels above the speed limit, on average, the 50th percentile speed was very close to the speed limit. So it didn't indicate any speed issue that, that we saw. And our origin destination study revealed that we only found four matches out of approximately 160 to 170 license plates that were recorded going in and out of the development. So given all that information, the conclusion that we drew was that there wasn't an existing speeding issue or, or an existing cut-through issue through the development. Now, I understand that we counted this information on one day out of the year. And regardless of what the existing data told us, I think what's more important to look at for the cut-through traffic is whether this development would have any impact on cut-through traffic in that neighborhood if it was to exist at a higher level than what our analysis revealed. And I think, I want to kind of discuss why I feel that isn't really, there's no basis for that assumption. And if you think of the traffic that is traveling through the area, I'll take the one direction first. If you're traveling up Ferry Road, any traffic that is cutting through to go to Swamp and Neal, their destination is not the development. If they're going to our development, they would be traveling up Ferry and turning into the development off of Ferry Road. So the cut-through issue in that direction wouldn't be impacted by our development. The other movement that was brought up at the planning commission meeting was, given that we have restricted the Swamp Road access to not allow lefts out of that development, the traffic may make a right out on the Swamp Road, make a right onto Neal, make a right onto Tedwell, and then make a left onto Ferry Road. And I guess what I would say is, if there was no access onto Ferry Road, that may be a reasonable conclusion, but given the access on the Ferry Road, most traffic is normally going to find the easiest and quickest route to get to where they're going. So I don't know why traffic would travel kind of in that roundabout area through the residential development when they can simply turn onto Ferry Road. So it's not our belief that this development would add any cut-through traffic to that residential neighborhood if the issue exists today. Okay? Let me see there. And I guess, I guess as a follow-up, in doing this whole process with the cut-through traffic, it kind of reminded me of two reports, two studies that I recently worked on. I know they're not in this area, they may not be the exact type of development, but it just reminded me of two experiences I've recently had with two projects down in the township, and there was a significant amount of cut-through concerns. The residents were significantly concerned about cut-through traffic. One of them had to do with a YMCA that was being developed along a very congested carter, and there actually was an existing cut-through problem that existed even before the YMCA was going to be developed. The second one was a shopping center that was going to be developed, a 225,000 square foot shopping center with a supermarket and a Lowe's and several OutParcels. And the main driveway to that shopping center was located directly across the street from a roadway that entered, you know, a big neighborhood. And we went through these meetings for, you know, many years with neighbors that were very concerned. And we're, I'm very sensitive to that, and I understand those concerns, and I think those concerns are very valid. As a result of those two projects and the concerns, we were required to do both a before, basically a pre-development study, six months before the development was put in place, and we were required to look at the study six months after. We had to study 15, 20 roadway segments, collect all the traffic before the development was put in place, and then subsequently after the development. And I can tell you in both situations, where the concern was probably likely that there may be some additional cut-through traffic, we found no evidence of additional traffic on those, on those side roadways. Clearly, traffic is going to go the quickest and easiest route to where they need to go, and traveling through those neighborhoods, like we tried to convey, was just not likely, wasn't likely to happen. But of course, it was the after-study that kind of showed the data that didn't lie, that there really was no additional traffic on those roadways. And in fact, I think the residents were kind of enjoying the new development where they had a supermarket and a place to shop up, up the street from them. So all I'm saying is, I know this was sort of an extra commentary on what we're doing, but it just reminded me of two very recent experiences where I was dealing with the same concerns, the same issues, and the after-development study really showed that those concerns just really didn't happen when the development was put in place. So I guess to finish up, in summary, for the proposed accesses, they will operate at acceptable levels of service, dear better, with the recommended site design. Our adjacent intersection of Swamp and Ferry will be mitigated with the proposed improvements. Those proposed improvements are a northbound right turn lane, which will reduce the queues on average about 40 feet, 40 feet from the different peaks studied. We're not going to have to deal with any right-of-way issues with the improvements, they're all feasible because they are proposed on our property. It is our opinion, based on the data and information that we gathered, that the development will not increase cut-through traffic through the neighborhood due to the configuration of the site and the intersection improvements being proposed. During the highest volume peak, as I had stated a little earlier, we're increasing traffic by less than 3%, and the highest peak is the PM peak period. But as you can see, by the vehicle increase over the total number of vehicles traveling through that intersection, it's a very minor impact on the, on the surrounding intersection. And I think finally, and most importantly, the township and PennDOT has reviewed our study, they've provided us input, we've incorporated that input into our, into our study, and I feel like, again, not speaking for them, but given the discussions and the comments that have been provided, I think we have the support, given the recommendations that we're providing, subject to the final review that obviously would have to happen with both the township and PennDOT. So I guess I'm done.
Any questions for Ms. Walsh?
Yes. Go back to the previous slide.
Yeah.
You have here the 33 vehicle increase in the AM peak, the 75, the 61, the 69 for the various peak periods.
Right.
What do those numbers really mean? Do they mean that because of the development, in the AM peak, you're only going to get 33 new cars on that road?
What, what that, what those numbers show is the 2311, I'll just take the first one, is the total volume-
Total volume.
On all approaches at the intersection of Swamp and Ferry.
Okay.
The 33 vehicle increase is showing that, that without development condition, there's 2311 vehicles. In the with-development condition, there's going to be 2344 vehicles at that intersection.
How do you come up with that number?
Basically, when we are estimating our trip generation, if we start with the trip generation, okay, the first thing we take out of the way is that 50 to 60% are pass-by traffic. So it's traffic that's already going to be on that roadway, traveling through the intersection. Then the remaining traffic is basically distributed in different directions. So some of the traffic that's coming to and leaving the site may not even be going through the intersection. Some of the traffic, for instance, is coming up Ferry and will leave Swamp and never go through that intersection, but we evaluate the intersection condition of what that impact is. Does that answer?
Anybody else?
It's an answer. I don't understand it.
All right, thank you, Ms. Walsh.
Okay.
Well done.
It had been my intent, as I said at the beginning, not to, at this point, go through in detail the environmental issues. We presented that information at the final planning commission meeting. That was the first time that the residents had heard from our consultants, and frankly, I don't know to what extent those concerns are still concerns at this point. So with your permission, before I make my closing remarks, I'd like to suggest that we hear from the residents, and then if there are environmental issues that are still of specific concern to residents or to the board members, we'll address them and try to limit it, because as you saw, we had a lot of slides in our presentation. Does that make sense to everyone?
We'll proceed there, it's a good suggestion.
Anyone in the audience care to line up or queue up for comments?
Is there a residential presentation? I know there was a presentation made, the planning commission, I don't know if you were going to make another one that was a PowerPoint or not, and we would like to, obviously accommodate.
We did read your PowerPoint that you presented, the planning commission.
Steve Murphy. My wife Karen and I and our two daughters, ages seven and five, live at 68 Valley View Drive. No, to answer your question, sir, there's no presentation tonight. I appreciate your time looking over that from the planning commission. To start out here, a few notes as I jotted down. Buffers, there's a lot of talk about buffers tonight. I don't think a single one of my neighbors has expressed any concern about the size of the buffers. It's not the details and how the developers want to put a gas station in our neighborhood, it's the fact that the developers want to put a gas station in our neighborhood. The concern is, one, and I think this question was asked before, do we need another gas station in Doylestown? It has been brought up tonight that there are developers looking at the site in Easton Road. There probably will be another gas station within, within a mile of this. Do we need this one here? I don't think so. Just to touch on one of the comments that I made about safety concerns during the planning commission, there is a human element in all of this. They have plenty of studies to tell you how safe everything is, all the gas tanks that are in the ground, the training that the people that work there go through, but you can look on the web, you can find, there, in any given year, there's three or four incidents in gas stations, usually local. 2011, there was one at the Plumstead one, where a car hit a fuel pump and water ended up in the storm drain. Eventually, that would happen at this site, and it will end up in one of these two rain gardens that they're planning to collect the water. And that, that's where our water comes from. The residents of, right behind here, our water comes out of well water. So we're drinking what ends up in the ground here. I'll submit one point that, and we just heard, that a majority of their customers are going to be pass-by trips, as they call it. Where's the benefit to the Doylestown Township residents? The people who are going to benefit from this Wawa are the people who are driving beyond Doylestown. Maybe they work here, but they'll be driving past and filling up at this gas station. There's no benefit to the town, to the residents of Doylestown Township, but, at least in the majority of their, of their customers. Some people will travel out of their way, the 33 cars in the peak morning hour there, maybe coming from down Doylestown that would have shopped at the Shell or the BP down the corner and are going to save a couple of bucks. So that'll increase traffic, I agree. Speaking of traffic, as someone who stands at the corner of Neal and Tedwell every morning that I'm home, and my wife does the other mornings, with my daughter waiting for the bus, there's more than just a couple of cars. Yeah, for the 15 minutes I'm standing there, I'll see one or two cars in a given day. And that may happen two or three times a week, not just the one day the data was collected. In a couple of years, she'll be standing there by herself, maybe, probably not, because I do expect this traffic to increase. She asked the question, why? That right turn lane coming onto Swamp Road- That right turn lane coming onto Swamp Road is one of my major concerns, mainly because the people that don't know they can't make a left turn are going to turn right, they're going to be upset that they couldn't go north or westbound on Swamp Road, and their little Google Maps is going to tell them to immediately recalculate right through Neil and Tedwill Drive. It's gonna, it'll happen, I know it will. I've done it myself, not here, obviously, but I've done it myself, I've cut through neighborhoods to get myself to work quicker when there's been a traffic accident on I-78 or wherever it might be. So, so that will happen, I, I know it will. Honestly, the only folks, I think, who benefit from this are not Doylestown residents, they're the developers and the Wawa, none of whom are taxpayers or voters or residents of Doylestown Township. The only people who stand to be harmed by this in the ways that we mentioned in our planning commission notes are residents of Doylestown Township, I believe. Honestly, and there was one other point where they spent some time explaining the C4 rezoning and the fact that the new land use for the C4 is only going to be good at this one location, so don't worry about the, the gas stations going in somewhere else. Sounds suspiciously like spot zoning to me, or at least a way that they can get around spot zoning by asking you to rewrite the code in the language they've given you. My neighbors have anything else? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Yes, sir. You need, no, no, don't talk, you have to get up and identify yourself and your address, please.
Thank you.
This is all being recorded, folks, this is recorded live, it'll be rebroadcasted twice a day for the next two weeks.
My name is Joe Shear, I live at 23 Valley View. I have a question related to the traffic study. There was a number 33 projected to be the increased amount of traffic at that particular intersection as a result of some particular assumptions that were made to generate the number 33. Was that assumption that a Wawa that undersells all the other gas stations in the area would generate that 33 additional vehicles, or was it some other installation at that intersection that would generate the additional 33 vehicles? The reason I ask is because I drive to Plumsteadville for the specific purpose of getting less expensive gasoline, and I know that a lot of other people do exactly the same thing because I talk with them at the gas pumps in Plumsteadville. My suspicion is that there would be substantially more than the 33 additional vehicles that was projected. So again, my question is, was the number 33 arrived at on the basis of the assumption that it would be a low-priced gas station that would be put on that site, or was there some other assumption that was made in generating that number?
Do you have, do you know whether that's, do you have an answer?
They may not be able to answer that question.
Well, I think, or there may be an answer, non-traffic answer. Mike, does Wawa undersell? This gentleman just said Wawa undersells its competitors.
Excuse me, don't answer that question until you identify yourself, please.
I'm going to ask him to come up and do that, yes.
Thank you, sir.
Tell them who you are, Mike, please.
Mike Riddell, I'm a project engineer with Wawa.
And what is your jurisdiction, just so they have an idea?
My job is to help procure approvals for new sites in Pennsylvania and parts of New Jersey.
Okay. And how long have you been with Wawa, Mike?
17 years.
All right. So you have a fairly broad range of experience, is that right?
I do.
Okay. And does, do you accept this gentleman's comment that Wawa undersells all of its competitors in gas?
No, we don't. When we first got into the gasoline business in 1996, we had a philosophy that we wouldn't be undersold. I think there's a conception out there that, that still holds true. However, it doesn't. We, we price what we think is a fair market value, we do make a profit on our, our fuel sales, and we generally price to the local area, and if you drive around to our stores throughout Pennsylvania or our entire territory, and compare us to other smaller gas stations, you'll notice that very often we are not the lowest price.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? So, just, I'm sorry, I mean, I don't think his question was answered, I mean, did you, so when that evaluation was done, was it based off of a lower-priced gas station, or like?
It's based off of a similar land use in the IT Trip Generation Manual, which is convenience market with gas pumps. So there, there are studies from all across the country for similar land uses, which is the basis of the trip generation.
Okay, so there was no, it had nothing to do with the price?
Not at all, not at all, no.
Does that, does that kind of answer your question, sir? I mean, I don't think the price was taken into consideration is really the answer.
Yeah, it has to do with the size of the land use and the, and the land use.
I can't question the study, I don't know whether you do that. I do question, I do question the assumption of-
You have to go back to the microphone if you're going to speak any further.
It, it sounds to me as if I could conclude from the gentleman from Wawa that, that gas sold by Wawa is more expensive than their competitors, is that what you were saying?
Let's not debate this point.
No, that's okay. You're right, thank you.
Thank you. Sir, you have, you have a question or comment?
I do, you may as well say there. My name is Joe Harry, I'm 5 Pine Mill Circle in Doylestown Township. During your traffic study, was any consideration as cut-through for Chapman Road?
No.
Which is a half-mile back-
No, we did not, that was not brought to our attention, we were not asked to study any cut-through traffic on Chapman Road.
Okay, thank you.
Sir?
My name's Carl New at 161 Tedwill Drive. I heard that about eight foot down, there's rock. I'm assuming that to put these tanks in the ground, there will be blasting. Does someone want to tell me how you're going to get through the rock, or if there's been studies in that area?
John, do you know who's going to answer that, or don't you have an answer?
Probably have an answer based on experience.
Oh, if you're going to-
Yes.
Based upon our Warwick project in Bucks, in Warwick, our last installation of the tanks, we went down approximately 22 feet, and it was removed by machinery, there was no blasting required.
You had rock?
Yes, we had rock, 15 feet, about eight feet down.
All right, no blasting?
No blasting.
All right, other questions, comments from the residents? How many residents, please raise your hand, how many? So most, the room is all residents, basically, right? Sir, who, who has the next comment? Of the residents, raise your hand, who are for this application? Anybody here in the room for, in favor of this application? Okay, let me assume that.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening, my name is Chemo Abasi, I live at 12 Allen Drive. Pardon my appearance, usually I come to a student, but I was watching my kids before I come here. I just have some comments with respect to Mr. Glacken's planning comments. He discusses that the proposed uses are consistent with or similar to uses that may currently exist in Plumstead and New Britton, and I would contradict those. Nowhere in any of those, in the C5 district in Plumstead or in the O2, New Britton ordinance areas, are there any gas stations or are there any 24/7 operations? All these operations tend to be retail or residential, and one thing I know is they tend to close at nine or 10 o'clock at night and reopen at five or six in the morning. So, I would argue that these new proposed uses are highly, they're highly more, they're not gradual escalations of uses, but they're actually dramatic changes to what was used to be in that neighborhood. I would think that the only thing more intensive than a gas station 24/7 would be a quarry, and obviously that's not going into that area. As for what a C4, by the way, by trade, I am an attorney, and I have done land use in the past on different projects. And a gradual, a C4 commercial office medical district is a very good gradual escalation or a buffer between a residential community and a commercial use. And that is exactly what is there now. And the uses that are there now purport to keep going with this rather instrumental buffer system. Now, one thing that I was also commenting on Mr. Glacken's testimony is that Wawa is stating that it can't find a site in Doylestown Township to put its, its operation. I live in a residential district. If I wanted to put a multi-family house in a residential district, I would be told, or in an R1, I'd be told I could not do that. So why can Wawa then say, or Speedway, or BP, or anyone who wants to create a gas station with a commercial use or retail, why should they be permitted to then say, "Well, we cannot find another use, so why is it that we should not be able to go into this site?" Now, it's, it's rather uncanny that they're not seeking to amend the C1 to increase their, their new uses or their changes or proposed uses. They're looking to a C4, and the only two properties that could potentially facilitate it. Throughout these meetings, I have seen representatives of Wawa, but I've never seen a representative from Rite Aid. So I, I think the prime catalyst here is not the Rite Aid, it's the Wawa. And the prime catalyst is to have a gas station in that area. And that gas station is a dramatic change of use than any use that's ever been there before or any other use in the area. And that's all I have right now, unless someone has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Abasi. Anybody else? Any of the other residents have comment?
Good evening, Peter Fekman from 180 Tedwill Road, and my wife Jody, and our two kids, Karina eight and Connor five, we all live at Tedwill. And I'm just going to touch briefly on the traffic study because there's a black mercury every morning when I do wait for my daughter at the school bus stop, from the lady who lives across the, on Ferry Road, who says she feels like she's part of our neighborhood, so she wants to cut through. And the gentleman in the black Lexus who works behind the bagel thing, who used to work for the township, but I don't remember his name, but I've stopped him on two occasions. If you have a black Lexus, sorry. And then the FedEx truck, the FedEx truck that drives through every evening between 5:50 and 6:10, who I've called FedEx, and he still continues to cut through. We all know, because he looks like Santa Claus, he has a gray beard. So, I, I just wanted to try to sum up, if I'm the last person, by saying that. When we all first came out here, we were told they would listen to us, voice our concerns, bring it to Wawa, it's a democracy, that's nice talk, appreciate it. Consideration for residents, but we all voice our opinions, I don't see anyone who's had their hands raised. So, I'm going to say to you, I'm also in the Army Reserve, and I've served over 35 years. I've deployed four times, and we always promote rule of law, stability. We promoted elections, provincial councils in Iraq, Afghanistan, and we tell people, you go out, you speak, you talk to your representatives, you tell them how you feel, and that's what we're doing here. And we don't have one person that's in favor of this development.
Thank you, Mr. Fekman. Yes, ma'am.
Marshall, queue up so you can kind of make it quick, make it quicker.
Karen Murphy, 68 Valley View. I just had a-
Related to Mr. Murphy?
Yes, I am. I just had a comment that Mr. Van Louvene, however he pronounces his name, I apologize.
Van Louvene.
Van Louvene, sorry. Had stated that they would provide public water for the residents on Tedwill that abut the property, and if there was no concern of contamination of the groundwater, why would they offer to do that?
Okay, Ms. Murphy, anybody else? I thought there was another lady there who wanted to say something. Come on, don't be shy. We want to hear from you, so please.
Nina Aston, 105 Tedwill Drive. Question. You talked about definitions. Definitions have confines, so you're asking us to expand the definition of C4. On the other hand, you don't meet the criteria for an E10, which is on one road. Is it possible, that was my understanding from the, the talk. Is it possible to, for you to change your criteria so you can find another site? We all bought our homes knowing, the, the expression is buyer beware, knowing what the, the existing zoning was. To change the zoning is to make us all pretty darn stupid. Thank you.
Anybody else? Oh, you got to follow that one.
I forgot to look at my notes. You mentioned that the zoning was about 30 or 40 years old, and-
Not that old.
1989.
Okay. And that's one reason we moved in the neighborhood, we liked the way it was zoned, we liked the way it looked. I don't want to look like Warminster or Horsom, I don't want to look like 611. There's a reason we live where we do.
All right, I want to ask, everybody, that's it? I'm going to ask, Rick Colle is our planning commission liaison.
Sir, do you have anything else you want to present?
Is there any else you want to present before the board goes into discussion on your application?
Certainly. You'll need to reiterate what we've already-
I don't, I don't intend to do that.
You need to sum it up.
I don't intend to do that.
Each of your particular witnesses have summed up their positions.
Yeah, I mean, there was one comment that was made with regard to stormwater and the concern that there were spill, that water would get into the stormwater inlets. That we can address, and it's addressed in the slides, and if you'd like to, just briefly, Mr. Fort, could you address that issue, or Adam, how we're going to handle that? Because I think that is an important concern, I think people have a right to know that there's, that there is, that, that particular scenario is not one that is going to occur. Tom?
Thank you. I am Tom Fort with Apex Companies, and as John said, we were retained to look at the overall environmental situation of the property and, as well as the construction plan. I have reviewed in some detail the construction plan, particularly with regard to stormwater management that Bowler Engineering has put together. And as, as was mentioned, the stormwater on the property does flow toward the northwest, toward the intersection. It will be retained in two impoundments, one on the west boundary, one on the northern boundary. But prior to going into those impoundments, the water is treated two times. It's treated by separation devices called snouts that are in the inlets that lead directly into the impoundments. It's filtered again in the bottoms of the impoundments, and the water that flows from the, from the fueling area of the Wawa site toward the north, northwest, actually is treated again through an oil-water separator. So, really, the stormwater is treated two times, at least three times in one case, before it leaves the property. We also have, here's the oil-water separator, here are the inlets that Adam described that take the drainage from the fueling areas. The other inlets over here for the proposed Rite Aid and the Wawa driveway go under the stormwater lagoon south of the drawing. So the stormwater is really, is really well-controlled on the site and filtered multiple times, built-in suspenders approach to being sure that it's clean before it leaves the site.
Okay, thank you.
There are a number of exhibits in there, but as you said, you can read, but so you've seen what we proposed there.
They're revised more well in advance of tonight.
Thank you, Ed.
Couple of brief answers to a couple of the resident observations. The idea that the C4 would be a buffer, I defy anyone to describe Doylestown Hospital as a buffer between anything, and that's a C4 district. That's an example of what can be developed in the C4 district. It's not just a buffer. That might have been the vision for one or two of these districts, but it certainly, Doylestown Hospital is a better example of what probably can be developed in a C4 district. It's not exactly a buffer use. With respect to why would Wawa offer, or why would Mr. Burchill offer groundwater if it wasn't a concern, the answer is it was a, because it was a concern to the residents, not because it was a concern to Mr. Burchill. We told Mr. New initially that we would evaluate it as this process went along and take it under advisement. It's not because we think there's a problem, it's because the residents perceive that there may be a problem. And I think this board knows that they all had the opportunity and would have had the opportunity to connect to public water, but nevertheless, we can see why these four homes that are right aboard and butting the site may have concerns that are not shared by people who are further away. I don't know how you intend to proceed. I had additional comments with respect to the planning aspects of this, based on-
Can we hear Mr. Glacken with the planning aspects?
Not exactly, because there are some specific issues that I'm, I'm not going to be lengthy, but Mr. Glacken commented on him from his perspective. I want to reiterate a couple of his comments, though. Boucher and James, May 13, 2015, review letter, which I know you have seen, talked about the- you have seen, talked about the compatibility of the comprehensive plan in four separate paragraphs, in each of which the conclusion was that it was either compatible with or not incompatible with the comprehensive plan. That is a concern of mine, because when I read the minutes of the planning commission meeting, it occurred to me, and I believe, that each of the comments, each of the reasons that were assigned for rejection, frankly, were not supported by what has been presented or by consideration of your comprehensive plan or of the ordinance. Whether or not, the first comment was that the zoning district C1 provides for use E10 and other districts provide for E1, those districts are infinitely more suitable for the proposed uses than another in the C4 district, and would have fewer impacts on the surrounding uses. I'm not quite sure where that came from. I mean, you just saw each one of your C1 districts. I'm not sure where you think that you were going to put this use and why the conclusion was that it was or would have less impact other than the fact that it's zoned C1. But I think you also need to consider, and we made this point to the planning commission, you haven't seen a new gas station, a new use E10 developed anywhere in Bucks County probably in the last 30 years. That's just not being done. What's being done are the type of facilities that you're seeing, these gasoline stations with the convenience stores that are being developed. That is the trend. I think there's a good reason for it. I think there's clearly a demand for it. And I think that there's a demand in Doylestown Township for it that would be of benefit to Doylestown Township residents. The pass-by traffic, I'm going to comment on this, I'm not a traffic engineer, but pass-by traffic doesn't mean people who don't live in Doylestown Township. A person who lives in Doylestown Township can be a pass-by traffic. He could be a person coming out Ferry Road or Northland Swamp Road, coming into the fueling station is still a pass-by traffic, a pass-by trip. Doesn't mean that it's only people who don't live in the township. And I think there are probably a lot of township residents who have occasion to go through that intersection on more than one occasion in a day. Certainly not all of your township residents, because you have other size of the township. Another comment, and a focus on this concern about other locations, that is a legitimate planning concern. We could have started this, and you could conclude that it would be appropriate to allow this new use in all of your C4 districts or in all of your C1 districts. My assumption is, or it's my practice when I submit an amendment, not to presume that I'm going to plan the entire township, because I usually have a specific site in mind. There are broader planning considerations. If you did not want to limit the use E20 to this particular C4 district, certainly, you just take away some of the specific criteria that would put it there and allow it to go in other zoning districts. You can do the same thing with C1. We're not saying that this is the only site that you should zone in Doylestown Township to this use, but that's a broader planning consideration from my perspective than we should presume to engage in on behalf of the township. And there is and was a lot of discussion about the fact and recognition, I think, of the fact that the existing definition doesn't reflect the realities today. There was a suggestion at the planning commission, I think that's part of the motion, that maybe we ought to look again at the C1 and see whether we ought to be tweaking our definition, whether we ought to be looking at our criteria. So there's a broader planning exercise. We're not saying, "Do you pass an ordinance that only affects our site?" But we didn't want to be presumptuous and say, "Expand it to a bunch of other sites," because then we're going to have an entirely different discussion than we had tonight, and you probably would have had 10 neighborhoods out here. I don't think anybody on this board was part of the discussion when the C4 district was passed in 1989. My assumption is that some of the people in the audience today probably had concerns about the zoning to C4 back at that time. I didn't have a chance to go back to look at the 89 minutes and find out whether it's correct, but I can't recall any rezoning in the 43 years that I've been practicing law that didn't have the people affected most immediately by it come out and oppose it, unless they happened to be proposing it. But generally speaking, change is perceived as bad. Residents perceive they have a vested right to existing zoning, and yet in this case, the same intersection was impacted only 25 years ago by a rather substantial zoning change. With respect to the second reason, number three, in the planning commission minutes, suggests that the intensity of the proposed uses are in direct conflict with the township's comprehensive plan. I went back and reviewed your Boucher and James review. There's no comment like that in your planner's observation. So I'm not quite sure what element of this is an intensity issue. Is it just the 24-hour aspect of the station, or is it something else? Because with respect to the coverage, the impervious surface, size of the buildings, there are no limits on the size of the buildings that could be built. So the intensity is a term that, in my view, needs some particular focus. And if intensity to everyone in his room means 24-hour operation, tell us. We don't know that. But we have, a couple of residents said that was a concern. It's not necessarily a concern that was expressed by everyone. And we don't know how serious an issue that is. But as far as bulk, impervious surface, no difference. We haven't changed any of your proposals here. In fact, we've made your development criteria more restrictive. So we don't see intensity as an issue unless the intensity issue relates to the hours of operation. And we don't know, again, from your perspective, whether that is an issue of concern or not.
Excuse me a second. So in all the discussions with the planning commission, that wasn't raised at all that...
There were people...
Would you ever go back to less hours per day instead of 24?
Never a specific discussion or a specific request.
Okay.
So I don't know. I mean, I haven't even gone back to Wawa to ask them. But if that's any issue...
It's different than what we're hearing out here right now, so...
Well, we'll give them a chance when you finish.
They can come back.
Yeah.
I mean, what we, Wawa, what we said was that while the Wawa's that are being developed today have all been 24-hour operations. That, I think, we all know.
Okay. Got it.
Well, okay. Are you done?
Am I done? Let me look at the rest of my notes.
I have the rest.
And you're not...
I just know that they're chomping at the bits and responding.
Well, that's good. Let them do that. That's fine. And let me finish, and I might. We've touched on the land uses and the consistency. Intensity, we touched on. Allowing the proposed use on other parcels, this is number five in the planning, remains a concern, particularly on West State Street and Butler Avenue. I'm not quite sure, again, we don't think there's any issue. And that site, as you know, if you follow, if you look at what we've done, we've given you a number of reasons why that site could never be developed as a modern motor vehicle fueling station. Nevertheless, again, I'm not sure why, whether it could be developed on another property is a concern unless the township wants to limit it and make sure you only had one, in which case, we can clearly tailor the ordinance. That's not a big issue. The applicant's not providing a convincing argument for a zoning change other than no current demand for uses allowed in the C4 district. That is a statement that superficially appears to be reasonable, and it is reasonable. But it's not just the applicant. It's the history. You've had this zoning district for 25 years. This is a two-property zoning district, and you haven't had any proposals on there except for retail. The properties have been for sale. There have been no interest in the properties other than for retail. It suggests to me, as I said in my opening, that the township's vision, the planning commission's vision, hasn't been borne out by reality, and it should be time for you, as the comprehensive plan suggests, to go reevaluate. Your comprehensive plan recognized that this was going to happen. It recognized that I was going to be standing here, and if it wasn't me, it was going to be somebody else asking you to do exactly what we're doing. Spot zoning issue, I'm sure Mr. Garten can advise you, but adding another land use, regardless of how limited it is, to a district is not spot zoning. It's a broadening of permissive uses, but it's certainly not a spot zoning when you allow a use that isn't If Wawa decides to relocate to another use, it opens the site to other potential applicants for the same use. Of course it does, for the same use, subject to the same restrictions. And that's the reason we've made these restrictions as significant as we have and why we've made the criteria as difficult to comply with. And, you know, as I said in the opening, if we want to impose safety restrictions in zoning, rather than make them a part of land development, we can do that. More appropriately, if the consensus is that Wawa is a good land use, and you'd like to consider it, but you need more restrictions than we have in our ordinance, that's a different issue. We can go through the land development process at the same time we review the zoning ordinance. We've done that many times in other municipalities based on a concern just like this. We want to be sure we get what you're selling. So we understand that. So bottom line is, I think we, there are rebuttal arguments to each of those planning commission reasons. None of them, in my view, are a compelling reason why something that does, in my view, constitute good planning and a good land use opportunity for the township should not be explored more fully. And that's why I suggested to you at the beginning that if you had concerns, if you felt that this was a land use that was beneficial, but you needed some more assurances, you needed more safeguards, you needed other issues resolved in advance, that we'd be willing to do that. We were not asking you to make a decision tonight, because you have a lot of new information to evaluate.
I assume from the reaction to what was just said, that many of you out there are concerned about the 24/7 operation.
Lots of head shaking for the record.
I would suggest that there are head shaking, probably 15 or 20 heads are shaking, and it's not trying to keep awake.
Yeah.
I'm riveted. We don't know about you.
Oh, I'm riveted, too.
Thank you, Mr. Van Louvene. That was a great presentation. All your professionals and experts, well done. Thank you.
One, looks like there's a lady that's urging...
There's somebody else who needs to speak, please. Any, please, we want to hear from you.
Barbara Schumpf, 10 Valley View Drive. About the noise. The noise has been at every planning commission meeting we have had. The last meeting, or perhaps the one before, I believe the gentleman's name is Kelso, said that he was at the Wawa in Plumsteadville about 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the morning. I don't know why he was there, but he was. And as he, well, you can laugh, but it wouldn't make you laugh if you were living in our neighborhood, and you had a gas station with trucks, fueling tanks constantly, supplies for restaurants, dumpster. Now they're proposing to sell beer. Well, everybody's selling beer. And Mr. Kelso, I believe that's his name, I could be wrong, stated he could not believe the noise. He pulled in to get gas. Now, this man is a proponent. He loves Wawa. He loves them. He thinks they're great. I don't share that view. Anyway, he pulls in, and there's a landscaper who comes in with his trucks and his gas cans, and God only knows what else. This was 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the morning. And you're asking us, all of us here who pay a heck of a lot of taxes and have come to all these meetings to say, "Okay, it's fine. Wawa has no place else to go, so let's put them there."
Thank you, Michelle.
I think we can now...
Anybody else?
We can now close. Oh, wait a minute.
Sorry.
All right. I'll just be quick. Kim Cathers, 200 Tedwell Drive. So my house is right on the corner of Ferry and Tedwell. And a couple things. I really don't want to look out my front window and look at a Wawa. And that's exactly what I would look at. And they're saying, "Oh, you know, it's going to be six-foot fence." A six-foot fence means nothing. That, I don't, I mean, I did not move to this neighborhood, nor did I want to be in Doylestown Township to look out my window and look at a Wawa. A 24-hour, and you know, they play music there. I mean, that really upsets me. Furthermore, as far as the traffic goes, I mean, I don't care how many studies you do. I live on the corner of Ferry and Tedwell. I can tell you how much traffic's there. And I can tell you that on a Sunday up at the shrine, how much traffic is backed up, all the way backed up Ferry Road. I mean, not just a little bit. So now we're going to put this Wawa in with gas stations and all of this right in the corner, because it's, that intersection couldn't be any smaller to put a Wawa. I mean, I think it's, if you look at the intersection, and I know you guys all know about it, it's just, it doesn't even make sense. It's crazy. And people do cut through our development all the time. I have a 12-year-old, and I don't want to be concerned being out in my front yard, that someone's going to run her over. And what about the bus, too? You know, she's got to stand on the other side of the street to catch the bus. So if she's going on the other side of the street and somebody's pulling in, then what happens? So, you know, I think that this is a concern. And I, you know, we all do have well water, and we have these septic tanks for our septic. And, you know, if there's blasting, who knows what's going to happen with that? I mean, they say there's no blasting, but whenever you're hitting rock, there's going to be blasting. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cathers.
Okay, I think we can close the record as far as comments and presentations. Pleasure the board.
I'd like to make a motion that we deny the application for change in the amendment. And if I get a second, I'll mention a couple of reasons why.
Is there a second to the motion to deny the...
I'll second.
And there were several reasons, but I just want to touch on a couple since, you know, you really zeroed in on a few, John. And one thing I want to back up for the record, you mentioned about some confusion about the vote on the planning commission. I think we all, all parties stipulated that the May meeting with additional information, that their vote would cure that confusion, and that vote was 401.
No, I...
Well, you brought it up in the beginning. I just wanted to...
Only in the context of why we wanted to reach that and go back.
Okay, fine. Then we're in agreement. As far as the comprehensive plan, it's...
Sorry.
As far as the comprehensive plan, it's an overview. The architects who devised the plan, they take a step back and say, "What vision do we have?" They then come up with the ordinances and the zoning and the uses to more clearly define what they had in mind with the comprehensive plan. So to say that this use fits into the comprehensive plan, while you can sit back and say that, well, there's a reason it's not in there, is because the original planners that did the comprehensive plan didn't want to go in that direction, and they tailored the zoning and the uses to tailor what their vision was of the comprehensive plan. And my last comment about spot zoning, I respectfully disagree. I think it's ripe for a zoning challenge. And for those reasons and others, I recommend we deny this.
I would like to add my comments. John and the applicant, I don't think we have to provide a model for Wawa on our township. And if it fits, it fits. If it doesn't, it doesn't. And the trend, as I see it, and I would hope, is that we build less gas stations, not more, in the future. And I hope in my lifetime, we don't see any more being built. And I believe that if we're going to modify our C4 zoning uses, that we do it best through our zoning, our planning commission, our plan, land planner, our consultant, and with public hearings with our residents. So if we're going to modify or mandate any of ours...
Maybe move to C1 or whatever. You want to look comprehensively.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to look at, as a unit, as a mass unit, not through an application for this kind of development. And then, and I also agree that the residents purchase their homes in this community, the C4 community, you know, and the worst they would expect would be, you know, perhaps a bank of doctor's offices, not a bank of gas station, gas pumps. So I think we have to respect that they're here, and, you know, we want to protect our zoning, not only protect our zoning, but protect the residents and where they live. That's why I'm in favor of the motion. And John, if you, you know, we argue about intensity of use. I can't imagine a more intense use in that corner. It's gas stations in and out. I mean, whether it's 24 hours a day or seven days a week, if it's, you know, 10 hours a day, it's still a very intense use. You got people coming in to buy things, sandwiches, get their drugs. I mean, it's very intense. It's a very intense year. So, and for that little area of the township, already highly congested, I don't see it. That's where I'm coming from.
No, I support it as well. I'm questionable on the data of the increase in cars. I don't understand it. I think it's going to be more than 33 cars in that AM peak period. I see the traffic there now, and people going in for gas and grabbing a sandwich and getting out of there. I think it's going to be a lot more than that, and it's going to create havoc in that intersection. So I...
Do you have anything?
Just only one point to the traffic study, and that's that you made a point that you'd be willing to do a post-study, like after the, after the building or the development, and six months after, I think you said. And, but the residents might ask them... And, but the residents might ask then, what good is that to them then, if you've already built it? And maybe you have an answer to that, but I don't think it's necessarily this time, but it was a question I think that was wanting to be asked. So, that's all I have.
Brian, you have any comments? Any thoughts?
No, I just, you know, I appreciate the presentation, but, you know, I still, you know, I lay with the sentiments for the rest of the board that, you know, I believe that we shouldn't be making these changes, and especially with the, you know, for me, it's seeing all these residents here and picturing myself as someone living on Tedwell. You know, I wouldn't want to be sitting where you were sitting, so that's really where it's coming from for me.
Without a call question? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All right, it's 5-0. Thank you very much. I'm sorry it didn't work out for you applicants, but you got to do what you got to do. All right, we still have more business, so if you're leaving, do it quietly, or you're welcome to stay while we finish. New business, expansion of the CDs offered by Multibank Securities Resolution.
Yes, as the board knows, we tend to put a number of opportunities for investments in our CDs. Multibank Securities is one that we've used on a couple of occasions, they've asked for a resolution if we're going to, if we happen to use them further.
Please, folks, we have to conduct more business. If you don't mind, thank you. So, this is a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, yearly retentions of the records and disposition resolution. Again, resolution has been provided. Is there a motion to approve?
All right, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And just another thing, on the table, there is a memo just for the board's edification that the DTMA approved to do the same thing because of our intergovernmental relationship that we have with the DTMA. Just want to make sure the board knows we're doing the same thing with their records, and they've provided a copy.
Mr. Snyder has a question?
Comment.
Comment.
The comment is, when you look at what was identified that we, you know, dispose of, and you look at the years that some of those documents are, they exceed the retention schedule. And so, I would like us to do a more thorough job and/or do some type of auditing or hold the department managers accountable from those things that are identified in this schedule that we get rid of every year. See stuff that is this old, concerns me a little bit, and I just would like the department heads to stay on top of it, and if we don't need it, get rid of it every year.
I think some things have a record requirement. Today's repaying is a lot.
A lot of them like to keep their stuff, they box it, and they put it away, and they don't tell Jackie necessarily where they.
Well, that's my point.
And I know you had a conversation with her in AI.
That's my point. That's exactly my point.
And we have an intern actually working this summer, well, a high school student working with us this summer.
Yes, good.
But we.
Just for my own clarification, are you saying that this, what we have on our desk, the municipal records, is included in the resolution that we just approved for the?
No, it's not in the resolution, it's just they're a separate entity, and they, too, did their.
Oh, they're going to do it, okay.
And they're going to do it, too.
Sorry.
And they already acted on it, I believe.
You're right. Yeah, I was there. Thanks.
Is there a motion in a second?
There was.
I think there was.
There was.
Call in a question, all in favor?
Aye.
My way of background, the board has seen the Casabella development. It received preliminary and final plan approval. The only issue here is just a reallocation of the same amount of impervious surface. And the reason for it is one lot had the whole road on it, so it meant that you could only build a little house on that because it had the whole road. And I think that the engineer, correct me if I'm wrong, and the planner had no particular problem, there's no increase, just explain what's going on.
Lot 4, because of all the road area.
It's a private road.
Yeah, private road, so this took up a major part of the impervious surface calculations for this property, ended up with a net of about 7,000 square feet, which you can barely get a driveway and a house on. So, what we did, we took 1,000 square feet from Lot 1 and 3,000 from Lot 2 and put 4,000 to future impervious surface of Lot 4. So, now we'll give it the ability if somebody wanted to put a pool or a patio in, and it is preventing a future problem.
Right.
So, your decision would be to approve the amendment, subject to all prior conditions that were added to the original approvals, and I assume you agree to those conditions?
I do.
Is there a motion?
I recommend we approve it.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Sorry you had to wait. You should have spoken up.
Why did you have to wait? You got here late after John started. I was like, you're late.
Even after we started taking you before the year.
Yeah, I know.
Don't be late again.
I did it because I thought they'd be in and out, I didn't realize it was that major.
You'd be out, you'd have been out of here about an hour and 20 minutes ago.
I know, Senator, sorry.
All right, thank you. All right, zoning hearing board, application of Hugnacki on 49 Frincher Drive South. Request for special exception, you want to send to the zoning hearing board?
Yeah, I would recommend this is offered in law suite because it's in.
I agree.
Okay. Request to send vehicles to auction. Here's a memo from Dick John, Operations Director. Crown Vic's going. The other Crown Vic's going. Wow, okay. Is there a motion to approve?
Is there a motion to approve?
Second? Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second. All in favor?
I have a question.
Okay.
On the.
Do you want to buy one?
Well, that truck is pretty good for only 60,000 miles. Is it rusting out like a lot of them? Is that the problem? It's not the mileage, it's?
Yeah, I mean, it's operated in snow conditions for over 12 years. They do not last.
It's not one you take to the Wawa and back.
Well, mine has less, more than this, and it's in better shape. I mean, don't you wash these things?
Oh, my God.
It's in better shape. Ours isn't.
Okay, all right. You're ridiculous.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you. Treasure support of July 21, 2015, we received electronically. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the bill's list for July 21. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.